Okay.
Can it?
I'm here, it'll be.
Okay. Whatever. So I imagine which of the two is... Actually, it's kind of going on.
I could go there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it'll be one of those two.
Okay.
Split a lot of this. Mollyne O'Head run against that long for the special student. Go bottom.
Oh.
And Rossie at Ryan. But then in this last election in November, the three districts have been preferred.
Right.
Both of them ended up winning seats in their respective districts. Ryan is for eighteen and Mollyne O'Head is nineteen. Just a which one?
So Ryan is nineteen.
No.
It says.
Uh, I thought he was eighteen.
It says representing the nineteenth district.
That might be old. That was, that was when he was first. Um, he won over Mollyne O'Head initially, but I think he was now officially the eighteenth district, which is out of my area.
It says Maloney. I will say, what's that, I'm sorry?
It says Maloney is for Pipsy.
I have so much to say, I was like, no.
Two thousand thirteen, twenty twenty-three. And it includes New York.
That doesn't sound right.
Who is the congressman for Pipsy?
It's not, it's not. It's either Ryan or Mollyne O'Head.
Is there a party planned that nobody told us about?
Uh, she's coming up.
Okay.
My comments. We're ready to kiss her.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the February first, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we would like to welcome Shannon. To Shannon Tafoe, who will be presenting the Employee Recognition Awards.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, and esteemed colleagues in the room tonight. It is my great pleasure that tonight we are announcing the school district's first ever, that I'm aware, employee recognition awards in front of the board. Um, I feel since our, our, I'm amazed every day by the continued dedication, the passion, the tireless hours of our employees each and every day. Um, it is, it is literally my greatest honor to award these awards tonight. And I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have all the principals come forward with their nominated candidates. And what we've done is, um, the school district's strategic vision is based on four pillars. The four pillars include student and graduate success, passionate people, partnerships with families and community, and efficient systems and equitable resources. And this month's award is centered around our certificate for student and graduate success. Each of our schools has nominated an employee that they feel represents this pillar in the best way. The main goals for student and graduate success is for all of our students, regardless of their race, economics, and disability, that they're ready to graduate and achieve their college, career, and life aspirations through equitable access to programs, resources, and high-quality instruction. Each of the employees that are being nominated tonight represent this pillar. So I will have all of our principals please come forward with their nominated candidates and come up here. And I'm gonna have their principals of state at the block.
What's best for you?
Before you actually, Shannon, stay that way because the camera's at it.
We can start the school. Nomination is from Hamilton Elementary School. And unfortunately, Michelle Manners can join us tonight, the principal for Hamilton. But we have our lovely Joe DiCaprio, who is your principal. And do we have Miss Bennett here tonight?
This is nominee Bennett, social worker at Hamilton Elementary School. Mel Bennett has been in the district for over fifteen years as an elementary school counselor. Mel not only meets with all the students that are on her daily case load, but also reaches out and opens your door up to any child that would like to follow her. Mrs. Bennett loves to take the kids on lunch breaks, trips, and surprises them with small tokens of appreciation for their self-control and perseverance in class. Mrs. Bennett is not only our social, our school social worker, but she has spread her love and caring nature around Hamilton community. She is constantly going to apartments or shopping for many of our families and not only during holidays. Mel is gone above and beyond with her hard work and dedication for our planning initiatives, making many house calls and phone calls throughout the week. Mrs. Bennett heads up and organizes our weekly backpack program and will very often collect food for our older parishes and food patrons. The children and families simply adore Miss Bennett and everything she has to offer, as she is truly the most selfless person we know. On behalf of Hamilton, I'm proud to be the founder of this.
And next, we are moving on to Howell Elementary School. Yeah, and we have. And we have Trisha Bedd, our third grade teacher at top.
Miss Bennett works tirelessly to ensure all students have the opportunity to feel successful while in her third grade classroom. It is evident by just walking into Miss Bennett's room that she works hard to employ student voice and ensure that her students feel a sense of pride and belonging while in her room. This is truly evident by the work that Miss Bennett has put into the work with students and families that come to Howell from other buildings. There is a student that had a history of elopement during due to not being able to feel trust of those around her and while is not finding a sense of belonging. Through Miss Bennett's tireless efforts and others, the student no longer elopes from the room and now can be seen working with Miss Bennett in the class on gap failing instead of room improvement. The dedication that this, in this one example, is what Miss Bennett shows to every student and every family that walks through the door of Howell Elementary.
Thank you so much. Our next school is Darrell Elementary School. And I will not write them so, if these were written by the principals, I'm just reminding them of what they wrote in the diary.
Rush his own.
Mrs. Homicide is the first teacher from the door in the morning and the last of the week. She is dedicated to the epidemic in social-emotional growth for students. She spends every lunch and recess with them, visits her classroom, and meets active students engaging passion and structure in a beautifully productive learning environment.
Our next school is Lincoln Elementary. Joe DiCaprio is going to fill in the gaps again. He's very good.
Okay. Uh, we are proud to recognize Deb's information processing specialist.
Where's that?
You know what? I don't think that could win. Either that or I just don't very know. Uh, so getting Lou Ferr and Lori's presence here, uh, will read aloud the question issue so we can hear what she thinks of her. Deb is the secretary for Lincoln Elementary Community School. As much she is the face of Lincoln, you couldn't be better served. She is friendly and kind. She decorates the office for every season and holiday particularly are worn and running in a pattern here. She goes out of the way to make everyone feel welcome. Many students stop by just to say hi, give her a hug. She is out there before anyone else except the old custodian, so we all get to start the day with her smile. Deb makes the job of secretary seem easy, even though we all know she's physically doing a thousand things at once. She is calm, very organized, and never seems too stressed with everything that is put on her plate. She does whatever is needed and goes above and beyond for student, staff, and families. She is a great problem solver and works to get to a solution, as it is called. Deb is a whiz with a servant and has supported our leading mission by making many. It's a great day to be a leader in my sign, so I was to hang around this week. We'll be playing events for our faculty. We start with a German event idea, which she has developed into a full-blown thing. She will probably be a party planner for her parents, which locals will be for a long, long time. We'll probably recommend Deb to the only IPS for Lincoln Elementary School.
And we have MLK, Kristin. And we have Asha Evans.
So Asha Evans, my amazing social worker, can you hear me? It's Asha.
No. I have your teacher's books.
Uh, Asha supports children, excuse me, where they are both academically and socially. She's co-creating a peer mentoring program called Big and Little Roads and Sis. She facilitates weekly meetings with this group where students support and encourage each other from school and try their best. Asha has brought princess meet programs, MLK, where young ladies meet weekly, build relationships, work on their own self-esteem, and become positive role models. Thank you. This carries over into classrooms for students of confidence to take academic risks and grow. Asha has had major impact on voice status towards children who are just regulated and or need adult and adult assistance with a problem. This is helping students what they need in an efficient manner and back to class learning as quickly as possible. Asha coaches new classrooms. She teaches, assists, and supports teachers and students with the SCL curriculum. Asha created MLK's mascot, Luther the Lion, dresses as Luther to amp up the school spirit during our monthly activities. Mrs. Bennett goes above and beyond to support students, staff, and families. She epitomizes the community school mindset, bringing in community members as our senate coordinator, as well as organizing and hosting adult ventures and GE, men, from GE, excuse me. She ensures performers valid and enhance the curriculum, but they are also representative of the students' heart building. She is a true champion of student and graduate success.
Next, we're turning to Page Elementary School, Vicki.
So this is Miss Norine. She's white. She is fabulous, fabulous, fabulous. Is that still looking for Mollyne O'Head? Yeah. Well, she is fabulous, fabulous. She is a paraprofessional, uh, in special education, focused in grade four. She is dedicated. She gives a hundred percent and beyond all the time. She is an educator every teacher, parent, and student needs. A beautiful human being that cultivates love and genius every day. She is fabulous, fabulous.
Maxia Pleasant Valley Elementary School. And we have Jennifer Dow.
Hi, everyone. This is Jennifer Dow, fourth grade teacher. Jennifer's a dedicated fourth grade teacher at Pleasant Valley who holds high expectations for all of her students. She is calm and creates an inclusive environment in her classroom. Every year, she creates a class in which students feel physically, socially, and emotionally safe and can focus on instruction. Jennifer attends professional development sessions in order to improve her practice. She engages in data meetings and is willing to execute short and long-term improvement cycles in her classroom to make sure that all students are successful.
Next, we have the Ankor Lear Elementary School.
Michelle Missaglia is the epitome of what you want as a teacher in your schools. She is dedicated. She is always going above and beyond. There is not a student or a parent in our building that does not know who Michelle is or how to get in touch with her. She sets the bar high for all of her students. Um, she is on our ARBLT team, is a leader in the, in intervention and enrichment services, and demonstrates consistent pursuit to improving our student outcomes as well as hearing their voice. Michelle helps with any of our students who are struggling and who are also needing that enrichment piece. Michelle's bar is here and students will always rise to it because she will make sure that that is always the case.
Next, we have Key Elementary School.
I have the privilege to introduce Alicia Ashley Williams, first grade teacher. Thanks. Uh, first grade teacher, uh, Ms. Williams works tirelessly to ensure that her students, regardless of grade, economic level, and ability, find success and that they thrive physically, socially, and emotionally. She engages in our planned new study act cycles where it was an open mind and a willingness to push first graders to achieve mastery. Ms. Williams embraces change, questions and wonders how best to meet her students' needs, and advocates for her students while uplifting her colleagues and their work. She is a quiet change agent that will continuously reflect and adjust to make sure that she is meeting the needs of all of her students. She has fully embraced resorted circles as a tier-one practice, and her first-grade community of scholars reflects this genuine connection every day.
Okay, next, Vicki. Now we have Woodland, Woodland Elementary School.
I'm not John Crow. It's actually better than the Virgin, but. This is Krista Lachawitz. She's our daily teacher. Krista brings together monthly celebrations for students for the month based on academic and social-emotional goals. This is Lachawitz. Every day is advocating for students to achieve their best and meet their goals. In her role as an ass teacher, she closely works with the students and their teachers to ensure students, academic group, putting their needs first. Also, she helps students find their voice and choir and will be holding, hosting a drama program from the ground up this year, and we're gonna put on a one-act play. So she's an amazing educator and she's a champion of her students, and we're so happy to have her.
Thanks. Next, we have Gates Elementary School.
Megan Jordan. Joining Gates School this past summer, Megan immediately worked with all staff to train and support the use of trauma-sensitive strategies. She worked to infuse curriculum into all classrooms so students could feel safe physically, socially, and emotionally so that they can attend to learning. Learning every student by name, Megan has supported each student at Gates understanding the pathways toward high school graduation. Her kind and caring demeanor serves as a model to all staff and students. The students and staff are influenced every day by the positive and professional interactions with Mrs. Jordan. She embodies our mantra.
Choose God.
Choose God.
Okay, next, we're moving on to our middle school, Central Park Middle School.
Will is a great asset to Central Park. He is a longtime dedicated employee to San Agnes City School District. He is my head custodian at Central Park. Will contributes to the district and the community. Um, I have worked with the school district for twenty-eight years and have worked with several custodians over my tenure, but Will stands out from all the others. Will is passionate about his job in Central Park Middle School. He goes above and beyond to make sure the building is always ready for our students and staff to enter. Will is, uh, I'm trying to breathe this with my glasses and my, I have a problem here. Uh, let's see. I gotta find her again. Um, Mr. Barrett goes above and beyond what is expected of his day. Mr. Barrett arrives early and stays late just about every day to make sure the work is done. Will is proactive, always, always looking for means to improve and enhance Central Park. He wants to make the building a place where kids want it to be and take pride in. Last spring, Will brought in flowers and planted them in the front of our building. He took his own time to maintain them, came in on the weekends, he watered them, checked on them, and he was very concerned that the kids would not take pride in it, but the kids did. They didn't touch him, so that was a great thing. Um, when we had water coming into several of our classrooms due to flooding, he came in at night to check, make sure the classrooms were good to go in the morning. On the weekends, he came in to make sure the classrooms were ready and all set and we could not be closed. Uh, Mr. Barrett is a very mindful and appreciated at Central Park. Uh, I am honored to present this for this custodian.
Mr. Corina?
I'm being a chipmunk.
And we have Miss Catherine Pickett, seventh grade math teacher.
Well, that works. Uh, Catherine Pickett, seventh grade math teacher. Mrs. Pickett is an eighteen-year veteran of San Agnes City School District. She is currently teaching math seventh and math seventh accelerated and unrecognizable. She has mentored, supervised student teachers, coached colleagues, and different teaching strategies to reach all students. Her door is always open for her students as she makes strong connections with them. Her students feel safe physically, socially, and emotionally in her classroom. This allows them to learn and improve their sense of honor. She integrates students' interests into her lessons, which makes math class interesting and fun. She consistently strives to improve, as evident by her improved efficiency rate. This Pickett is a role model for her colleagues and her students. This is the reason why I have selected Catherine Pickett for the student's success program.
Next, we have our Mount Pleasant Middle School. Sarah Carlstein, the Eagles have piloted a program for their team called Do Work Well. They created this program and run it during their support grade. Students are scheduled to meet with them and engage in goal-setting to improve their academic outcomes. It is a huge undertaking that includes all the best practices related to increasing graduation rates. Partnering with students, partnering with families, short and long-term goal-setting, providing students with a single point of contact for academics, et cetera. To go a little bit off script, we had a principal meeting earlier today. There was a quote from a touch-up that stuck with me, which was, "Respect individuals, respect individuals." And that really reminds me of Sarah Carl at the practice. I feel like everybody in the building respects Miss Carl because she respects them. She respects students to be partners and create in the knowledge of the classroom, and she teaches through integrity. She's an incredible advocate for all of our adults and students in the building, and we are lucky to have her. Next, we have our San Agnes High School. This is great. We have Megan Novak and Bethany Dexter.
Megan Novak and Bethany Dexter come as a pair. They run our SD flex room, which used to be our intel room. They support and provide our students both educationally, emotionally, and socially, and have allowed many of our most trauma-impacted students and those that struggle historically a pathway to a regions of home. Their passion and compassion allow them to engage positively with students while providing rigor academically and with support. Off of the paper, many studies say that it takes one caring adult in a child's life to help them become successful. Their students have two, so I am proud to nominate them for this this evening.
I'm trying to nominate one. Is that Shannon? I can't nominate one. I have to nominate two. I said, all right, that's not gonna argue with me. Sorry, a team is. Thank you so much for all you did for our guests. Thank you. Next, we have SCLA Gregory Fields.
Miss Anne Williams, she has been assigned since past eight years, and she is the mayor, may, building secretary at Ice School Two. Uh, Miss Williams goes above and beyond her job description to develop relations with both parents and students to encourage that families focus on student success and readiness. She provides basic information, information about requirements and resources along with anecdotes about our parenting experiences before referring parents and students to the appropriate staffing. Families trust her, thus they seek her out for life. People call all the time for her. It's something that's a little crazy. She is the foundation of our building. I think all five pillars of the district, she embodies them all. Most importantly, with her passion for student success. Sometimes I'm in my office and listen to her talk and advise students, and I'm amazed at how she gets them to focus on their success. Then I hear her talk to parents who have sometimes been difficult for me to talk to, and she gets the parents on track, gives detailed information about what will help their children in school, and so she's amazing. And this year has been even more with the transition in the school. Miss, Miss Williams is the foundation of us.
And last but not least, Justin Roylance, Washington Irving Education Center. We have Sue Jan Stajkovic. Stajkovic, special education teacher.
Mr. Green is giving you a shout-out. I miss you. So Sue Stajkovic is a special education teacher at Washington Irving in the Oasis Anxiety Program. Sue has been at Washington Irving since two thousand sixteen, when the Oasis Anxiety Program was created. Prior to this program, students identified with severe anxiety, were almost completely unsuccessful in all of their courses, reached exams, and had a zero percent graduation rate. Mrs. Stajkovic helped create and maintain an environment where students feel connected to their classroom family, embrace the therapeutic programming with the social worker, and has created connections with families that are unmatched. This whole wraparound service that Mrs. Stajkovic has championed has resulted in almost one-hundred percent graduation rate. The testimonials from parents will bring tears to your eyes for not only are her students successful in their academics, their social and emotional growth is just as dramatically improved. So thank you, Mrs. Stajkovic.
We have, we have, we have, we have, we want to get a picture, I think Karen will be responsible for the picture. Group photo altogether. Right in front of the right and left here. You just blocked us.
Did you guys come in over in front?
You guys come in over in front.
Mine is... You gotta keep it in the pocket to give it a little saw. Raping bananas, always a little saw.
No, absolutely not.
They should give us like a smooth dash to move. Thank you.
I'm good.
Tippy toes, board members, tippy toes. Karen, on you. Once you guys are done, we just gotta take one here, so she's gonna need you guys to sit down. She'll get this. Sorry.
One, two, three, smile.
Karen, we're looking at Karen.
Anybody else real quick?
No, Karen's not right now.
All right. One, two, three, smile.
Hilarious.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It should take two days to go long enough.
That's terrible.
Can you fix the board? Let's fix the quarters.
Don't move, there it goes. Second!
Shining. All again, forgot you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Oh, wow. It was a lot. I was like, "Why are all these people here?" Did you guys start fighting anyway? Was it here?
The minutes of the January fourth, two thousand twenty-three Board of Education meeting are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Vivian. Second.
Second, Eric.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All in favor?
Opposed, the motion carries. We will transition to the privilege of the honor group. We do have one speaker. She's here. Melanie Alguadala.
Well, I see she wants to speak, so she signed up to speak. Carlos, move it.
Thank you for your patience.
Julie, can you grab the mic? Collaborative process. She's gotta read that. She's gotta read this.
Good evening. We are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it's crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. The asked speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you choose to do so. The board will now welcome the public comments. Each individual is allotted three minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
We're glad to have you.
I just wanted to show my support.
You now have perfect attendance. Now, you have transitioned to Superintendent Williams and his comments.
Thank you, Board President. Trying to try my best to keep the comments brief. We have a pretty packed agenda. There are more important individuals that I would want the board to hear from during my comments. So, today kicks off Black History Month. This is always an important time of the year, just like every day, should be to recognize its accomplishments and celebrate our African Americans. It's also a time to raise our voices and recognize where racism persists and to applaud those who are creating change against it. We will be celebrating and recognizing Black history one way or another throughout the month of February. This morning, we had an amazing start to this significant month at a night of history, led by our Ozark students. They kicked off their Black History Month with a ceremony that included a tradition that they started, those students started, which is the raising of the Black Lives Matters flag outside of the school. It's a proud moment to see students send a message that they do matter, that their voices are heard, and that we stand together with them against hatred and racism and strive to advance racial equity. Our Ozark students began with the raising of the flag in Black History Month. They started that last year, so I do want to remind you, they came to the board last year with the support of the board. This is not the second year that they've done this. If you haven't seen the celebration, it is posted on our social media. You can check it out on our Twitter. But I want to pivot and kind of digress from my comments. And I was so blown away by the performance of two individuals this morning that I invited them. I literally went up and I said to Mr. Sandor, "They need to be at the board meeting tonight. I need the board to hear what they did and to hear their performance." So, tonight I have Miss Tatiana and Miss Heidi here, two key advisors who lead the Ozark group at Onay Middle School. They're going to come up and introduce the two individuals who will then perform the song for the board. So, Julie and I grabbed this, she was the center. And they're gonna perform right here in front, and we'll have the music as well.
Take it around, Joe. Yeah, go on the other side of the podium. No, they don't need to see it. They just need to sit. They're good.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much to the board. My name is Ms. Gibson. I'm a teacher at Brown Island High. This is my co-founder to Ozark, Ms. Heidi Chantistrella. And please want to give a warm welcome to our two Ozark professors, Rainie and Trenna Dees.
Well, they don't need to see this. They don't need to see this. There's no lyrics. Okay. Why don't you stand right in front of the TV then?
Watch yourself. Nope. Wait. Better get down as quick.
I've been walking through the woods without a place to lose. Waiting on my shoulders, I've already been here. Oh, I got eyes in the back of my head, just a place I have to run. I feel what I can and I care what I can for my people. All the clouds on the back and the stars fill the night, that's when I'm gonna stand up. Take my people with me, together we are going to a new home. Far across the river, you give me freedom calling. Calling me to answer, I keep on keeping on, and I feel it in my bones. Early in the morning, before the sun begins to shine. We're gonna start moving towards a separate way in life. I'm falling down, I'm falling, you know I gotta make it up. And I'm running by losing the blood on my way to salvation. And I'm fighting the strength that I got until I die. So, I'm gonna stand up, take my people with me, together we are going to a new home. Far across the river, you give me freedom calling. Calling me to answer, I keep on keeping on, and I feel it in my bones. What's around the world might be hard, the faces are alone. And I just might live, but the Lord does not try. Sure, the stars fill up the sky. Stand up, take my people with me, together we are going to a new home. Far across the river, you give me freedom calling. Calling me to answer, I keep on keeping on, and I feel it in my bones. I'm gonna stand up, take my people with me, together we are going to a new home. Far across the river, you give me freedom calling. Calling me to answer, I keep on keeping on, and I feel it in my bones. Take my people with me, together we are going to a new home. Far across the river, I give me freedom calling. Calling me to answer, I keep on keeping on, and I feel it in my bones.
So, this is the last one more song I'm about to sing. I think, I'm seeing the story. Last thing, twelve hours ago, I asked them to do this, so they stepped up. Thank you so much. We're really proud of you. I think Dr. Coto said it all. We are with you with this, on this journey. We're looking forward to what you do as you enter into the high school. Not all of you are creators, but as those, I think you guys call them the OGs, the original Ozark. The double OG, I'm sorry. So, as the double OGs enter high school, Mr. Green, watch out. They've got some great stuff. So, thank you again very much. And Ms. Gibson tonight is also up for tenure, so it's a big night for Ms. Gibson as well. I'll pivot back to my comments. Again, thank you again to the Ozark students for inviting me. Look forward to being back for, they also raised the pride flag. So, we'll be coming back to see that happen later this year. Our MBI, our Micro Chief for students, also have a variety of activities going on, blah, blah, blah. And we will be documenting and sharing many of those stories with you. So, again, please follow our website, our social media. They are participating in My History, My Future, I Believe, campaign with the State Education Department. A few weeks ago, we recognized Dr. Martin Luther King and the students in our schools that have a variety of different things to celebrate. Dr. King, I did share the staff. I hope you had a chance to see it. Again, it was in my brief, and it's also on our social media pages. I also want to offer congratulations to Jennifer Corrigan. She is one of our other irreplaceables in the district. She's a teacher at Pleasant Valley. And Jennifer Stevens, who's also a math teacher at the high school. Each just earned National Board certification. And so, you know, anytime we can recognize staff, tonight you saw the power of recognizing those staffers who are aligned to our values. You know, again, National Board certified teachers is the most respected professional certification in education. It is like literally earning a degree from what I've heard from folks, again. And so, our district now has nearly eighty National Board certified teachers, which is second only to New York City. So, I take pride in that and inherited a culture of excellence. And so, I do want to give Jennifer, both Jennifers, a shout-out for receiving National Board certification. Again, we are still working and looking for kids for our student advisory. If you want me to plug, we've got more applications, but Deputy Superintendent Rutnick's needing that effort. If you have anybody who wants to be on the Superintendent's Student Advisory, please, please, please send the names. Really simple process. We just want to know why you want to be a part of it, what this is what it comes down to. Extended learning programs are underway and running at many of our schools. If there's still parents looking for after-school programming for their students to participate, please reach out to the school principal, or you can call our district office and ask for Dr. Coto's office, and he will connect you in the right way. STEAM Camp is underway. We will have students in grades one through five during winter recess, February twenty-first and twenty-fourth. We've got some exciting programs planned, such as digital design, coding, engineering, bike kits, audio production, and more. We still have some openings for participation. Just want to mention real quickly that tonight the board will be voting on the core principal for the big-picture San Antonio program. And so, we're excited about that. We're looking forward to putting the new core principal running to recruit some ninth grade students to enroll in the program. More to come on that, and you'll hear from Deputy Superintendent Rutnick in next month's update. Our community schools continue to evolve, and feedback that we've been getting is fantastic. The work of them cannot be done without the community, and so I can't say that enough. Uh, you know, kids are with us for less than seven hours a day. And so we've got to draw synergy and use the school as the hub to really wrap around our children. I'm proud of the work so far and how it's moving forward, but more to come as the year progresses. Uh, I also want to thank the Schenectady Education Foundation. They recently awarded nearly fifty-two thousand dollars to teachers in our district to fund projects and activities that were driven by teachers. Uh, again, extremely grateful to the foundation and all they do to support our students. Uh, all of the funding they provide comes from donations. I also want to thank SEI Design. They're our architects in the work that we're doing for the Schenectady privatization plan. But they have put some skin in the game as well. And I think to the board back tonight, they've donated two thousand dollars worth of stewardship gift cards for us to give as part of our project. Be here attendance seminar, um, so we can recognize kids who have a perfect attendance. And we're also finding ways to just let kids know that, hey, we appreciate you coming to school. We miss you, we want you back. And, you know, this gives us an opportunity to give them some credit. We can't really do that with district dollars. And so having partners like SEI and the foundation, uh, help us in places that we can't do without our funding. Last Thursday, we held a district-wide spelling bee at Mount Pleasant. We had twenty-eight competitors. The top two finishers in each of the schools were represented. I'm very proud of them. Uh, no matter what happens, to me, the word I told to spell was winner. Uh, and they all spelled it to start out before we got going, if anybody was eliminated. Uh, but congratulations to Central Park's very own, a top speller of the Schenectady, Amir Miles. Um, I'm not sure if there's any relation to make there, but I didn't know. I didn't want to ask him, but I was gonna check with you. He will participate in the regional qualifier and have an opportunity to advance to the 2023 New York State Regional E. Uh, last week, I also had an opportunity to, uh, go to our partners at Sui Schenectady and participate in their new welcome center. If you haven't had a chance to see they created a new welcome center, which includes financial aid, um, registration, and a couple of other offices all together. I guess before, kids had to go financially to one building and kind of run over to another building and register, and they would lose kids. And so now, um, the hope is that their enrollment increases. But I do want to make a quick plug. Um, you may have seen the governors proposing that all schools, all schools and students automatically are admitted as high school seniors to their local community college. Now, I want to recognize the efforts of Dr. Munoz, um, and the work of us here in Schenectady. We created the Schenectady Promise last year, which does that for all of our seniors, uh, in Schenectady. And last year, a hundred and thirty-one students took advantage of it. So think about it. A hundred and thirty-one students were not asking the question of what do I want to do when I graduate? They were asking the question, what do I want? They were answering the question, what do I want to study? And so we look to continue to grow that. Uh, Deputy Superintendent Ruttnick's working with Mrs. McCall, who are at Sui Schenectady. And we're gonna be, uh, hopefully having the Schenectady Promise 2.0. And more to come on that. Um, now we're gonna be focusing on just more than the kids, but potentially, uh, some extended individuals. So more to come on that, and, uh, we've got some partners to jump in to help us expand our promise. The Athletic Hall of Fame recently announced that the 2023 inductees will be Johnny Romero, Jim Scott, I'm gonna mess his name up, Gary Prizziello. A dinner in Syracuse is being planned for September eleventh. So mark that date on your calendar next year, September eleventh. I believe it's gonna be charged at the Rivers Casino Den. Um, the great venue, this fastener. You can learn more about the inductees on our website, and we are gonna share more information on how to get tickets as we wind down. Final two announcements, uh, 2023-24 pre-K applications and the lottery for three and four years will take place this spring. The applications will be available in April, and we've updated the information on our website for that parent to know now the timeline, so they can plan accordingly. We have a great UPK program, Dr. Chism and her team. So please, 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 we want to have as many of you take a part of it. It's a great way to lay the foundation for future success in Schenectady. And it's also hard to believe that last Friday was the final day of the second market period. So with that, we are at the official halfway point of the school year. And, um, this is where it gets a little tough as we push down the finish line to continue graduating more quickly, to keep performing better academically. But again, I encourage everyone to use this new, this new market period, this new quarter as an opportunity to do better and finish strong. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. Ozar students, amazing. Both of you are amazing. Thank you. Thank you. You inspire us and you remind us why we do the work that we do. So thank you so much for sharing your talent with us this evening. Thank you so much. So, and I, and Board, I'd like to share a few things with you. First one, we had a handbook ad hoc committee on January eighteenth, and we are almost done. Yes. We only have about two more pages. And then what we're going to do is present it to the board to have you review the handbook. Um, we are working in collaboration with the policy committee, whom then we will also give them the handbook. And they'll take a look and see if we need to revise any of the policies, so it aligns with the handbook. Uh, and stay tuned, that's coming soon. Also, on January eighteenth, um, I did a little presentation with the parent liaisons. We had a really great time. There was a lot of information shared on both sides. Um, the parent liaisons had great conversations that looked like a board meeting. They were debating and having some good conversations. So I will continue to share some of the resources that were shared with the parent liaisons to the board, or, yeah, to the board. And I did send that one item, the Ten Ways to Empower Parents. So I'll send some other things to you, but I think it was a great conversation. I also would like to mention that, um, I did attend the Yates Winter Concert. It was amazing, and I'm the school liaison for that school. Yes, I'm saying it. It was amazing. It was amazing. Um, and the orchestra was wonderful. But I also want to hone in on Wits and Wisdom, which is one of the programs that we approved on the board on our March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. And it was part of the Great Minds program. Um, and the reason why I highlight that is because there's been a lot of conversations about literacy, right? What is Schenectady doing around literacy? So I was at the school for a while to look at how the students are interacting with the content, with the material, and how they're really grappling with answering questions. And I haven't, I'm going to go back to Yates to see more of Wits and Wisdom, but I did want to share that because that's something that we approved as a board, and it was great to see it in action. Now, I do want to mention a few things from NISBA. So NISBA, the onboard newsletter dated January ninth, and all of us got it in the mail. It should have happened in the mail. On page eleven, it provides the 2023 budget, vote, and school board election information. It's like a timeline, and it's really, I think it's really helpful for the board. I have one here, the copy here. Um, so it's the last, it's pretty much the last page. It looks like this. But please take a look, because that's all you know when you're heading into budget season. And I know Terry is going to be having a presentation or giving a presentation today. Um, an important requirement, though, that I did want to mention, and you'll see it there too. An important requirement mentioned that our school district continues to follow this. This, our school district has continued to follow this. This is Education Law Section 2022-7. It requires the school district to post its, onto its website, the final annual budget on any multi-year financial plan adopted by the board. I also wanted to mention two other things. On February tenth, and I think all of you have received it from NISBA, they have the virtual conference. And that virtual conference is from eight-thirty to twelve-forty-five. And what that conference does is that it provides us with information, an in-depth review of the executive budget proposal discussions with legislators and school policymakers. Um, and that meeting is actually supposed to kind of prepare us for February fifteenth, which is lobby day, where many board vendors across the state are able to come and meet with our legislators. Okay? So, and I will be attending, and if anyone else can, that would be great. But I know the time is kind of hard. It's from eight to four o'clock, and that's on February fourteenth.
Fifteenth.
Or fifteen. And I did also want to mention, I, the ceremony was wonderful, and I'm going to steal it from Principal JP. Our teachers are fabulous, fabulous, fabulous. And it was awesome to see the work and the dedication, the passion. And I'm borrowing words from the principals, the dedication, the time commitment, the, just the love that our teachers have for our, our students. So thank you for everything that you do. And we will continue our comments with VP Holanda.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Um, I also want to recognize, oh, our Ozar students who are no longer with us. Um, the song, um, just, it resonates with me every time I hear it. It's, it's just amazing. So to hear two young students sing that song, I was kind of mesmerized. I was just listening to their voices. They have such beautiful voices. So I just want to say thank you to all of our students. That was a really nice treat. Thank you, Superintendent Annabelle, for having them come in this evening. Um, I did want to wish everyone a happy Black History Month. It is February first. Um, I do want to recognize that Proctors, if anyone is interested, is having a movie series, um, February second, the ninth, the sixteenth, and the twenty-third. There are four movies that they're playing. Um, there's more information online, and I think we might be able to get it. I don't know if it's on our...
Yeah, we posted.
Perfect. Okay. Um, so that's happening this month. Um, I also wanted to recognize that the Blue Roses Theater production of Passage is taking place inside the Bill Ziskin Black Box Theater. That'll take place February ninth, tenth, and the eleventh at seven o'clock. And then there's also a matinee at two PM on the eleventh. Um, and just to kind of go back, circle back to Superintendent's comments regarding, um, Dr. Martin Luther King Day. I did watch the video. Um, so if anyone has a chance or an opportunity, please do. The students worked so hard. They were absolutely precious. Um, just, just, you know, talking about the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. Um, I attended MLK, um, as a student, as a child, and, and I recall vividly doing the, um, I Have a Dream speech. Third through fifth grade, we would go everywhere and we'd recite it. So to see the students doing that, that was very, very heartwarming. Um, so if you get a chance, please check it out. It was really, really well put together. That concludes my comments.
Are we gonna, we're gonna pass the mic?
We're gonna pass the mic.
By, by the way, the microphone seemed to be hot online, but just not... Yeah, that's, that's funny.
That's different.
Hey, Bernice. Hey, y'all. Um, so, good evening, everyone. Inside joke. Um, it, Ozars, what up? Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it short. Um, there are lobby days happening all over the place, um, because it's the legislative session in New York. Um, and I attended and co-emceed the Alliance for Quality Education Lobby Day on January seventeenth. Um, our, our big ticket item was to say thank you. Um, that finally, we are fully funding our schools with the foundation aid formula money that we were owed for way too many years. Um, many of us have gone to the, the state Capitol and participated in, um, actions locally. Schenectady has been a leader for a long time, demanding, um, our schools be fully funded. And it ended with me being the plaintiff suing then-Governor Cuomo for the tens of millions of dollars that New York State owed our schools. And after he was gone, Kathy Hochul came in and conceded to the lawsuit and said, yes, I will fully fund our schools. Um, and that three-year phase in results in us receiving, in this next role, because the roles have been released, um, twenty-four million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. Y'all should be clapping. That was twenty-four million dollars.
You took Terry's money.
Terry, you get, um, deposed by the Attorney General's office, and I will let you talk about how much money we got. Um, the seven years that I spent in the lawsuit was on top of, again, decades of time of us demanding that our schools be fully funded. Um, again, many of the folks that are sitting up here, past board members, um, parents, teachers. I saw Mike Silvestri somewhere. Dude used to stand and hold water because we walked from Schenectady to Albany. Parents, teachers, and, um, the Schenectady Federation of Teachers fully supported, made sure that we were hydrated. Um, and so it's, it's been a long time coming. Um, there are Black History Month events happening. I'm gonna lift up that Lincoln Elementary School has won on Thursday, February ninth. Uh, one of our newest hires, Tom Edwards, is over at that school and has been tirelessly reaching out to folks like, hey, we're looking for connections. How can we do stuff? Who can we talk to? Um, so shout out to Lincoln Elementary and the work they're doing, and looking forward to their Black History Month events, as well as others across the district. That's all.
It's so true. Um, really briefly, I just wanted to, I really wanted to be able to recognize the, um, young ladies, Ozar students, for the wonderful job that they did. Their talent is incredible, and I just want to encourage them to continue, um, continue with their singing, continue exhibiting their talent and honing their talent and their skill. They did an incredible job, and I wanted to recognize them for that. Um, I also wanted to, again, recognize the teachers and faculty members that were recognized this evening, and even the faculty members across our district who were not recognized. I just wanted to say thank you. Um, thank you for your dedication daily, your hard work daily, your, um, emotional investment. You don't just do your eight and skate. You bring your work home with you. You bring everything home with you. Um, the, the creativity, everything that you do, putting our students first, our children first, the love and the dedication that you have for our students. Um, we don't take it lightly, and I recognize that maybe we don't say thank you enough, but seriously, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything that you do. And that's all I had.
So I heard about it, y'all. Now, I'm not going to say it, so here we go. No, but I'm really looking forward to the state's presentation tonight, because I know it's a big initiative for the district. I know there's a lot of data and presentations. I'm looking forward to that very rapid success. So what's going on? And I don't know who's next, but it has to be Kathy or Princess.
There is nothing better than Erica with a microphone handheld.
I don't know what else, but I'm gonna hopefully hear about it.
Um, I just like to dittle what everyone has said about our teachers. They are great. And our staff, everybody in our school community and our students are excellent. And I'm bragging because I was a student too, so I'm excellent too. No, just excellent. Um, I lost my thought. Oh, I just wanted to mention that we're, we had the policy meeting, um, last, um, month. Can't believe it.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, I know. Um, and we're gonna show those two, um, to the board for the first read, these two of them. And, and we're also working on another one that's not here yet, but it's about, um, utilization of videos and cameras. And we're gonna set up a policy that, for that, because there isn't any. Um, so right now, we're in the data gathering stage of that. Um, and we're listening to our, um, Director of School Safety and Climate about, you know, his opinion and the things that are going on in regards to that. So if you guys have any input into that, feel free to let us know. And that's it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The, um, I wanted to highlight, because I had mentioned it at the January fourth meeting, the importance of attending that spelling bee. So I went to that spelling bee last Thursday, and congratulations to Joe for announcing all of the, Joe DiCaprio for announcing all the words. But congratulations more to our students. They were, it, it's really amazing to see them doing it. Uh, some are very confident. Some are a little less confident. Some are downright nervous. And, and it, it's just rewarding to see them. Everybody made it through the first round, and I think it went seven rounds in total. I, I took notes on it, and, uh, and once again, congratulations to Amir Miles and the other, the second-place finisher. Actually, there were, were two of them. One was from, uh, Central Park as well. Um, the word, the second word that he had to spell, Amir had to spell, was miraculous. I took notes. I copied them all down, and I couldn't find it tonight, but that's irrelevant. One of the words I did learn, we learned something in these spelling bees too. Clickbait was a new word for me. Clickbait, people. Look it up. And then spell it. It was spelled successfully. Um, that was, that was fun to see. Actually, the next round will be, unfortunately, it used to take place on, on Proctor's stage, but my understanding is that it will be a virtual competition, uh, the next time. Uh, I don't think there was as much sponsorship for spelling bees around the country, because that used to be a newspaper event, and newspapers are having a tough time. So that's it. My recent activities, the last five days, have been in Washington DC, uh, with the National School Board, um, Conference. And the first, uh, event was the Equity Symposium, and we heard some, uh, tremendous speakers and, and did a lot of breakouts. and did a lot of breakout sessions in connection with that. After that, we were there for the Advocacy Institute. Yesterday, I visited Congressman Pat Ryan's office. He represents District 18. He was not there. We met with staffers and talked about the goals of education on the federal level. Those five, there's five, there are five main areas where, that are involved in that. And it is the school meals, school meals. Federal waivers ended last summer and that's been difficult for many school districts. Not so much for us, but there are aspects of the federal waivers that we need to have passed to be able to keep offering the school meals as we do and particularly with regard to delivery. We had problems initially with having used our buses to deliver meals and that was more of a state issue, but there are those kinds of issues on the federal level as well. We also talked about Title I and Title II funding. Schenectady receives a significant amount of Title I funding and that is the most useful federal money that we receive because it has the most variety of areas where it can be applied. Title II money is for teacher development and we all know how we've needed that in the last three years. It's helped that our teachers learn more remote ways of giving information to young people, learning all the systems that, you know, everybody had to turn on and die. Part of, part of attending these conferences, this National School Board of Conferences, you can hear what's happened across the, across the nation. And so I met people from Alaska, Hawaii, and various other states for that. The other, the other two areas for me, for us on a federal level are the IDEA, which I believe I spoke about last year. That's the Individuals with Disabilities Act. That is 50 years old this year and it's been funded well below the 40% level that special education was supposed to be funded. In New York State, it's about 14%. And while we recognize that no one is gonna go from 14 to 40 in a single year, we would like to get the commitment for more, for more funding and at least a latter approach where, where more is, is given. It's, it's, it's a very tough arena, but they've been advocating for that for a long time. The last one is particular to New York State and that is the cap that was placed a few years back on state and local tax deductions, limited to $10,000 for all of your taxes, your state and local taxes, property taxes and so on. That hasn't affected as many people around here as it does affect down on Long Island and in the lower Hudson, but that's one of particular interest to get that cap removed again. So those were the items that we were advocating for. As I said, I met with Congressman Pat Ryan's staff people. I saw Congressman Mark Molinaro, spoke with him for about 10, 15 minutes. You only have maybe 20, 25 minutes with these congressmen. And Paul Tonko flew in for briefly and back out. And so I had a chance and I see him pretty regularly. So he represents most of the schools and represents Schenectady among the other ones in his district. So those were two of the activities that I've been involved with over the last several weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, and we'll now transition to the budget overview presentation presented by Financial Officer Terry.
Terry, why don't you bring the mic, Terry? And then board members, we have the presentation also in front of you, thanks for your kind.
And good evening, everybody. This is not really a budget overview. This is supposed to be part of the session. I would like to talk about the budget overview in the business office. This is more functional, the business office, review everything we do. Keep in mind, everything, we may not have interaction with students on a daily basis. The decision that we may make in the business office is in the minds of, you know, the effects of students in the educational process. Our... As we follow our vision, our tagline, and our values and our core values of the district, we also concentrate that also in our business office. In the business office, we have 14 people total. And there goes the organizational chart. We have three people that we oversee in the central office, centrally oversee in the duplicating office. And just recently, I have taken over the transportation department. We manage a lot of the non-instructional functions such as visiting, accounting, procurement, laborations, food service, and like I just said, recently, transportation. And we also assist all the other major departments as members of the ELT, work with them closely on a daily basis. Here goes all the current titles. We have one vacancy currently in the payroll. And I'll talk briefly about each department as we go forward. Our main mission of the business office is to provide outstanding customer service to district stakeholders, including taxpayers, vendors, district employees, students, and their families while maintaining the physical integrity of the district. Also working closely with the district leadership to provide accurate, timely information to facilitate, inform, and effectively decision-making. Now, like I said, touch briefly on this, the slides are there with information. Just, we process payroll now, which is my business change as well to district, every day, everybody twice a month. A newly created position that I've known pretty well since I started here a year ago is the Human Resource Liaison. A lot of businesses and a lot of places I previously worked in audit this evening there was a disconnect between the Human Resource, Human Resource Office and the Payroll Office. Although they kind of do the same functions. So we meet weekly, discuss any issues that may come up and make sure that we properly pay people. We have approximately 1,800 employees. We process about 1,000 to 1,400 timesheets bi-monthly. We also work on voluntary, voluntary deductions and changes that people may submit to the office. And then we also manage the third account, health insurance, car insurance, trip depositing type. Responsible for various reporting filings on an annual basis, quarterly basis, monthly basis, New York State retirement system, W-2, usual payroll reports. Also is the purchasing office, under the principles of sound business management and in the scope of board of education policy, making sure that we are following all the guidelines of federal and New York State Department Controller, New York State Controller's office. But we also purchase most of our commodities and services from preferred sources. There's currently three preferred sources in New York State. And when necessary, we will do the competitive bidding where we are able to pay back into a New York State contract, cooperative purchasing with the New York State General Services Administration. And then we have an internal procurement policy, you know, although we can follow OSC, but anytime somebody wants to purchase something between $0 and $3,000, you get quotes. And then $3,000 to $6,000, three verbal quotes, $6,000 to $20,000, three written quotes, and $20,000 plus a formal bid process. But this is followed throughout the district. You know, we adhere to this with Walmart buildings, the West Coast work well within these guidelines and various departments. The accounts payroll department, currently managing one person, and the purchasing is also one person who are assistant. And then the accounts payroll handles the day-to-day management of all payments, making sure what we are paying for, whether they actually receive the services, matching up the POs with receipts and invoices. Just to give you a general idea, you know, we probably pay everybody weekly. We processed 5,565 checks last year. Total purchase numbers for the last year, so we were $7,700,000. Obviously, we paid for every order, one purchase, one payment at a time. Just to give you an idea of how we deal with a weekly basis and how efficient the offices. And then we also have a third-party accounts receivable person who handles the day-to-day billing and collections. Wolfie's working third-party in the cash receipts. We process 2,656 cash receipts. That doesn't necessarily mean the automatic direct deposits that come from the state in the state area. But we work closely with the retirees, make sure that we properly bill them for health insurance that they're due. We look at the local charter schools, make sure we bill them properly, and then portion reimbursement also. And then also, we also keep track of our special education students, making sure that we properly recall staffing. Make sure we identify the costs that were related to them and that affects how we reimburse the state for excess cost for those students that we send out of the district either through another private institution or capital region BOSIs or another public school if necessary. And then, not everybody's favorite, but we also have a tax collector. You know, she works closely with Capital Region BOSIs. We're one of the few area schools that collect taxes on a quarterly basis. Most school districts do it in September only, or maybe twice a year. We do that on a quarterly basis. So again, to give you the value that we do, we have 20,215 parcels, 1,200 of them exempt, so basically 18,000 are not at third. Capital Region, if you know your taxes into the Capital Region BOSIs or into Pioneer Bank. Within internally, we do direct facilitiations. We're the point of contact for all taxpayers to receive all the telephone calls, lost bills, de-issued bills. So it's a daily process being that we do collecting quarterly is the high volume that we do. We also deal with the taxers if anybody wants to challenge their taxes in a major business. If there may be a settlement, if maybe you spend on the taxes, we have our local legal team and to make sure that we have the reserves set up in case there's a drop in taxes. I'm able to take that money out of reserves to fund those lost taxes that they have. Payments and due of taxes, also represent some of those with the city IDEA. To, those are basically if the business wants to move into the city, they don't necessarily pay the tax on that building. So we have like a call payment and due of taxes to make us this agreed upon model. So we manage that and make sure that the pre-credit, they won't invest it to us. Just to show you over the last seven years, in 17, 18, we had a negative tax and for the last three years, 0% taxing. Also in the business office, we have a school lunch program, child nutrition program. Every student eats for free, so we are eligible for the community eligibility provision. So basically, all students receive free breakfast and lunch. And those that haven't participated in the school programs, they receive a free snack with them. Depending on the time of day, how long the program goes, you have a snack with them. 76.92% of our students through direct certification, SNAP, meditate homeless, migrant youth, and immigrants across the children are automatically qualified for free to reduce and by having that large percentage means all of our students are able to qualify for free to reduce. Approximately number of students that we serve per day, if you really think about this in volume, not another public organization in this area that, you know, serves 2,656 breakfasts on a daily basis. You know, that number is low. We're here since 2001 and we are constantly working on trying to get that number up and principles, make sure we provide the practice for all of our students. Whether it's in the classroom and at the, at lunch, 4,426 per day. After-school acts, 135, and even free to, as the programs are rolling out, we're going for a snack with them. We have a centralized kitchen. The majority of our food is prepared at the high school. The student to the other building, the global buildings that are not equipped to move by their own opium in the building. That's something that we are looking at, I think the capital project, maybe to make that process more efficient throughout the district. We currently have a manager in the contractor, who prepares all the food and stuff for kitchens. We have one manager who sees the school lunch program as an assistant who helps her. Our recent kitchen cafeteria renovation, recently did Hamilton, Keene, Omega, Middle School, Montez and Pistro. And future ones that we're looking at, currently are in the middle of the eight. This is the board that we received a check report from the business office and then, which is currently just the bank statement. I don't know, Brian, can you click on the appropriation stats before they're formed? This... All right, this is gonna be a report and you can go back. Basically, it's gonna be reported, which you should have been receiving on a monthly basis. That monitors our monthly expenditures compared to the budget and appropriation and the consequences. So you will receive this report and we'll review it. If you have any questions, answer those for you. But it basically gives you a snapshot of where we currently stand financially each month. And it also will be a revenue status report, which is basically shows the revenue status of the state area and tax collections. So these are reports that you should have been receiving, that you were not. So we're gonna implement that starting next month. That will show you those daily or those monthly updates. We have a claims audit that we do also. And every check that we send out gets reviewed by a claims auditor, a district employee. They review every single expenditure, make sure it's proper and has been approved. You should have also been receiving a report from the claims auditor on a regular basis that any findings that she may find while she's reviewing every single check and that she'll provide you a report after every warrant to make sure that we're compliant. So you'll be aware, we should give you your assurance that all expenditures are proper and under the guidelines of the district and the policies. And the cash report you have to receive. So those are the two reports that we're gonna be able to review going forward financially. Audits, one of our favorite things in the business office that seem to never end. We have the annual external auditor that comes in, the definite audit that's submitted to New York State to make sure that we're compliant, say that everything's materially stated. Also a single audit for a lot of federal funds that we receive. There's another report that we have to file federally. A period of line procedures for programs and contract for excellence, which is a wide range of issues. representation, is another audit that we're currently going through to make sure we're compliant with the regulations. Internal audit, New York State requires also the districts, enrollment over a thousand students that have an internal audit, that's an annual report, and we've identified areas that we wanted to look at. Claims audit, which I mentioned to you, that you receive. Then the Office of State Controller, every five years, currently in the process of having two auditors in the district right now, who are reviewing our financial and programs. They're expected to be here approximately three months, so that's currently in the process pretty well so far. The major component, obviously, is the budget for the business office. Our current budget is two hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. As Miles D'Amico mentioned previously, this afternoon, we received orders from the state governor of an increase of foundation, years created. Fund of the foundation aid, so we're looking at a $24 million increase in foundation aid in addition of $2 million in expenses for the year. Today was the due date for all the building budgets, so I come back to my computer because they're aware of those numbers coming in, and we gave the opportunity for all of our buildings to build their own budget. So they, every teacher has the ability like last year and this year to go in and recall the wish list, but basically they're able to identify their needs in their classroom and in their buildings and develop a budget. This is something that we took out last year, this is the second year, and I think it went very well. Every teacher's also in the $300 visually for our educational data, which they can use for their classroom supplies and materials. We're also gonna fund student supplies, which is separate from the wish list and educational data that we use in the district. So working on classes for all the students, and the district should be able to support the supplies of every student that we share.
We'll do a better job.
Yeah, the education student out there, working our principals, so the Gary Owens and the need to make sure that they are all ready. We also have staff meeting scheduled with each building principal coming up in the next two weeks, working not just with the business office, in resources, teaching and learning, OPA, looking at enrollments, and each principal will come in and request these other buildings, and we'll make sure that they are appropriately staffed at each building. Budget vote that will once again be out earlier than last year, I started on that, we're working on that, so that will be released prior to the budget vote, so people have more transparent in their budget and have educated, and they're more able to vote for the budget. As you're well aware, last meeting, we talked about capital projects, $300 million. You know, I'll be working with the business office and the other state owners throughout the district and the community to identify the needs of the district that was in addition to the VCS. Now we're gonna fund that, and now we're gonna do those projects over the next seven years. Lot of pre-planning, because we currently have an RPL for the construction manager to assist in that process, and then working with SEI, construction manager, and various stakeholders, get that started rolling as soon as we can. That is also gonna be on the budget vote. We also operate a capital offlane, those $100,000 projects that the New York State requires we do each year, the state A, about in the same year that the bus is being completed at our state A. Any questions about the business office, what we do, any of the control review?
Yeah, I would just say one thing, that there is a button already on our main website that says 2324 budget development, so that's where, as we go through this process, documents will be located, it's right on our main page, right underneath the pictures. So just, it's blank now, but Karen has already created the space where that information's gonna start to pop up.
And we will also be issuing a budget survey, so once again, we get the community input, providing the data on the seat. If you remember last year, New York State does a fiscal stress and monitoring, so I'm gonna touch on this real quick. New York State Office of State Controller Program to objectively identify issues with budget areas, solid see the ability to generate enough revenue, we need expenditures to reach in this power in New York State. They do for all school districts, towns, cities, counties. There's a financial indicator and an environmental indicator. We are currently in the financial indicator, ten out of one hundred, the lower the score the better. Last year, we were eighteen point three percent out of the normal. The big difference in this year compared to last year would be related to our fund balance. Last year, we had two point eight seven percent of unrestricted reserves of fund balance. This year, we're at four point six, a little bit over in the recommended state of four percent, but it shows that we're building our reserves for rainy days. Everything else is pretty consistent from last year, actually the numbers are exactly the same. Cash position, ten out of twenty, that's more of a times issue. And the second one is the, so there's no defamation on the first one, maybe you can mark it for much, as it appears. And then the second one is the environmental indicator, and that happened to be the same score as last year, there were no changes in that. So you'd be able to review, it's related to poverty, student-to-teacher ratio, teacher turnover, tax base, and budget support, and English as well, you have your own. So that is a breakdown of my rate of that at fifty, which is a moderate environmental Any questions?
Surprise.
Is it, is it a number? Is there a number?
The operations of maintenance and so forth is no longer under the business office then, that's a major change.
Yeah, the director was directly to one.
Yeah, so Brian Danglott was not here, he had a, you know, dogs are like family, he had an emergency with his dog, and so, yeah. We worked closely with him, obviously, like in his furniture bidding and all that. And that hasn't changed because facilities is a priority, conditions of our facilities.
I'm having the coffee, must've come over. The budget vote approval rate, zero out of five. And I understand this is a more, excuse me, we've really approved all of our budgets. I'm really not certain even what that category is saying. Is it, if you were to have had disapprovals, is that where you would have picked up points?
Yeah, we got a zero, which is great. Our budget approval is seventy-eight point one-two percent. So if you have a fifty-one percent approval rate, you get like ten points.
It's the voter approval, right? It's the voter approval.
I knew that.
Yeah, so they're saying, you know, we're, we're, and I had to work with the.
So getting zeros is a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I knew.
Yeah, so there's a basic, and again, it's guidelines in the state, you have no control over how they score it, but if we didn't have such a large percentage approval, then we would get more points, potential of our generating tax.
Good luck with the audit of, from Denali's office. They, just for point of information, they had sent us a letter last spring that they were coming, and they haven't, hadn't come in nine months, so.
They're a little behind. They're here for, they've been here for a little bit.
They've been visiting the various departments, we were all pushing, what we did in tax payable, treasurer, assistant school.
And just note to the board, we, you know, we embrace that, we wanna get better, and it's always good to have outside folks to tell us, it is cumbersome, but sometimes it can be a little embarrassing, but it's good to happen here.
There'll definitely be an hour.
I guess I just have one question, but I imagine that it will come up later, because there were different breakdowns of the allotments of money, and the governor and her executive budget spoke about the importance of mental health. And of course, we don't yet know what that number will absolutely be, because the Senate and the Assembly have to put their two cents in. But if there is a increase in allotment from the state specifically for mental health, I guess, you know, how does that fit in on the timeline of where we are right now with you all building the budget?
Yeah, so Terry, you can jump in, but basically, we're building the budget now, addressing the things that we know are priorities, so, for example, student sports services is already adding personnel in our budget. We were already knew we were gonna have, we weren't working with a $24 million, we were working with like a fifteen, sixty million dollar number, because we had, that's what initially was given to us. We already knew that we were building to that capacity. If there's like bullet aid that's specific on mental health, then yeah, obviously that would give us the ability to be specific with that. But just note, we're building the budget now, increasing staffing in many of the areas that we didn't do last year. One of the things that is a challenge, and I want to mention this now, is that everyone's talking about a recession or a cliff coming. And so, when we invest in these people, the fear is two years from now, will we have to take away that. But I will tell you, we're doing it. Everything has to have a formula for us, so we can have a rationalization. So, you know, I put the team through, basically, if we're gonna add it, why do we add it? What's the foundation, what's the basis? Because if we have to take it away, we're gonna have to have a rationale as to why we took it away, as opposed to just adding six or seven. But every division will probably grow, especially around counseling, social work, we've added attendance, more attendance individuals, so we're planning it already, because sixty million was already more than we had last year, and so we are working from that standpoint.
Well, the governor understands that if she takes back any of the foundation aid, we go forward with the lawsuit and we don't have to start over from the beginning, we're still in the same position to sue for the money, so she's smarter than that.
So one of the things that we have work to do, and I think this is what Terry was alluding to about getting back to his computer, is that some, you know, our principals, they're gonna make some wish list items, and so we have to review to see what's reasonable and what's not, because that twenty-four million could have been gone, I mean, we haven't even looked at it yet, no, just kidding.
Well, in the phase in of actually fifteen extra or sixteen extra millions, that would make us fully funded, the additional money comes from the foundation in form of inclusive forces. So it's like a seven percent increase due to the inflation CPI over the past year, so that's part of the foundation. Now, remember, there always has been a no harm clause, so if we maintain the level that we did in that additional, then we should not be harmed going forward, so we should expect at least that level of funding going forward. So, but it was inflated by like six million dollars, due to the current inflation.
One of the workshops I attended in Washington was on the, on the finances and the potential for a fiscal, the fiscal cliff as they call it, and particularly with the end of the American Rescue Plan monies, and so there are a lot of serious questions to put at that, and they were, they were showing board members what kinds of things, they have a finance workshop, that, of what kinds of questions that we can ask or should ask in regard to this, so many of them, it sounds as if we're addressing already, but.
Yeah, and we've taken our American Rescue Plan, you know, we put some things in there, it's been, some of the stuff's been hard to do, given like supplies, timelines to purchase, so we're taking a little bit of a pivot and really trying to cover some of the saddles so that we could free up some of our general funds, so we know that that has an end life really next year, and so then, then that's done.
You know, one of the questions was around using it for any improvements to physical facilities, for example, and, and is that reasonable to do, and so on and so forth, and, you know, there was, there was a little debate about it because does that directly affect students, but of course, we want our students to have the same benefits as students in, you know, wealthier suburbs and this kind of thing. So it, these are, these are many of the issues that, her name is Dr. Marguerite Roser, was pointing out to us.
I'm wondering if any other board members have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. So our final presentation for tonight is the safety presentation presented by Director of School Climate and Safety, Jeff Russo.
Hey, just before Jeff gets started, you know, I wanted to, I was gonna say this in my comments, and I figured I'd wait here, because typically there's, I'm sorry, thanks. I was gonna say this in my comments earlier, but I didn't, I bit myself, I should have said it, but the reality is that oftentimes, we talk about culture, climate, safety, you know, there's, there's a direct relationship to our partnership with Sanneckin Police Department for us in Sanneckin, but across the country, you know, we all witnessed something that was, it was horrible, tragic, and, you know, I didn't have an opportunity to recognize the loss of life of Mr. Nichols, which was, I couldn't be watching. So, you know, I will tell you, Jeff has taken really a lot of pride in what he's done, to be sensitive around that narrative, and, you know, we take it really serious, the work that we do, and so, and I wanted to make sure that we don't forget, that like, we know we have a lot of work to do as a community, as a system, and, you know, I do want to mention Jeff's approach to this work has been really new for us in Sanneckin. He's taken it extremely personal, he comes from a mental health, you know, worked at Berkshire, and he's done some other work prior to being in law enforcement, which I think gave him a different lens. But I just definitely wanted to recognize the life of Mr. Nichols. You know, today was a ceremony you didn't know, you should know, he was powerful, he was a creative soul, and so before Jeff gets into it, you know, I just want to make sure that we continue to honor the loss of life proportionate to tragedy, but that we also recognize that we have work to do with some of these systems, and I think Jeff is taking that to art, and hopefully you will provide us some more guidance and feedback, and hope we can do better, but this information is promising, and I think we're taking really smart, calculated steps with our partners in the Sanneckin Police Department and our engagement officers, our climate and our safety monitors, red shirts, security monitors, very much called, they're fantastic. David showed up here tonight, and so I do want to, some of them came in the audience to support their leader and to work with their team, and so I just wanted to say it before we started.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank the Board of Education for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. Definitely, I want to echo the sentiments of the Superintendent in that situation. I know that one of the reasons I came to Sanneckin to work here was because I felt like I was in a broken system, I felt like I could do a better job for the system. So as a former law enforcement, I felt like there's a lot of good there, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I didn't feel like I'm effective in that spot. So I'm here as a product of that system, and I think that having worked at some of the places I've worked prior to being in law enforcement, that's where I got the lens that I got, and it just, it is different than the average person sees, and I think hopefully we'll get a good taste tonight of what it is that we see, what it is that we wanna see, and what we're gonna move forward with, that's my goal, is to try and get whatever. So if I could, let's see, we know everything we wanna do is gonna fall onto our vision, our tagline, our organizational values, and I know that when we talk pillars, I think it's important to hit all four on this one, to say student graduate success rate, passionate people, partnerships with families and community, and efficient systems and equitable resources. All four of those are integral to the accomplishment of safety. I can't emphasize enough that every single time any issue comes up, it always seems to be tied to safety somehow, everything always seems to come back to safety. And so, with that in mind, you know, I always go back to my roots at Burshe Farm, where I had an executive director, that is really, if you're still here, I remember Rose Washington, and she used to come out every year for the State of the Farm address, and she would tell everybody about Maslow's hierarchy needs, and she would talk about the fact that if kids don't feel safe, they don't learn, they don't do well, they don't get better, and it was all about fixing kids when we were in residential care. And so, this slide is actually the Superintendent's slide from last year. He put this slide up for the very first safety presentation when we started talking about these issues last year. And so I think when we look at Maslow's hierarchy, we know everybody needs food, shelter, water, that's the basic needs that a person survives. The next level up though, safety, is absolutely that next line, that is what we need to get better, it is what we need to move on to the next level and accomplish things. So I think safety is critical, I'm passionate about it, everybody I hire has a passion for it, I'd like to think that, you know, I'm gonna get into a lot of what the red shirts do, but I can tell you, they all take pride in that title, and I think that what I've been really successful, what I hope to do, which was bring a lot of people from Sanneckin back to the school to get working with the kids to accomplish all these different roles we wanna accomplish on the Superintendent's. So tonight, we're gonna talk about where we were, where we are now, and where we're going, for context, I started in November, about fourteen months ago. So none of the red shirts have been with the district for a year as a red shirt. Some have been paired as a different positions, but we've only had one red shirt, it was here longer than the last year, and that was the one that existed before I was here. So as far as where we were, or where were we, I just want to bring you back to a slide from last year's presentation on the redesign survey, and when we did that presentation with Mr. Omeili and Debbie Supert. And when we did that presentation with Mr. Omeley and Deputy Superintendent, when they did that presentation, one of the things highlighted was that the number one concern for students, parents, and employees across the board was safety. Everybody felt like the buildings were unsafe. If I walk into a building, I don't know what's gonna happen to me. It just seemed you had a bad feeling going within the building. And one of the things that I've gotten, one of the things I've really taken private in the last couple of months or so, is the number of times I hear the fact that people see a better climate culture. I hear that a lot, and people forget, I tell you a lot of times, they just call me Director of Security. And the District Director of School Climate and Safety. And so, I think that that climate work matters. And I think that we're gonna make sure that we put that in the forefront, making sure that, you know, that safety is always gonna become a priority for us. So, when we had all the issues last year as far as that being the results of our survey, one of the things that was just initiated before I got here was the pilot program with Schenectady Police Department. And so, I asked them to come here tonight. I've been working close with the Schenectady Police Department to try and make sure that we're guiding the directions that we want to see it go, to make sure that we're collecting the information that we want to collect, to make sure that it's not going anywhere that we didn't want to see it go. So, I want to, first, before I do anything more with my presentation, I want to wind up with Ted Mike Dalton from the Schenectady Police Department. He's gonna take you through the pilot program up until where we are right now, and what their goals have been and what they've accomplished thus far.
Schenectady alumni as well, right? That's right.
Okay, so, as you said, the program was a pilot last year. This is the first year that's existing officially in the base of the board, at least the Superintendent. And we got a lot of work to do moving from that pilot to a permanent program. We have some more staffing stuff we have to do. So, I'm just gonna go through, I'll introduce myself real quick. My name's Mike Dalton, I'm a senior police officer at the Department of Defense. I graduated from here, Schenectady High, still living in the city. I've been with the Police Department for 14 years now. Every shift as an officer, every shift as a supervisor, detective sergeant, professional standards. And now, I'm a second assistant, I'm the commander of the CO program and the ACO program in the city. So, what we started doing this year is we're collecting data, collecting a lot of data. And we're doing this for a couple of reasons. We want to provide transparency. We want you guys to know exactly what we're doing. We want to address a lot of fears and negative things that people worry about that happened by any of the reasons for this school. And if any of those negative things did happen, we'd like to know how to find a way to get away from them. These are the current categories we're tracking. We can add categories or take it away, I don't see us having to take any away. But, you know, we're always learning, so there will be things that we probably add as we learn. Another thing to do with tracking besides the transparency is we're hoping to build a database. So, going forward, we can decide where best to store our resources. We can work with Jeff and Superintendent and build a program where it needs to go based on the need. This is just a chart showing some of our current data. You're gonna notice that September is very low and the sky rockets here in December. I was building a system for tracking this over the last couple of months. We finished it sometime in November, Sergeant Cloudy went back and was tracking as much as he could. A few were passed, some were passed. But there's many things that are an official police call that we started tracking. So, I expect the numbers you see in December to start plateauing as we go on. And that will probably become a baseline for some of our activities. So, this slide here shows our top activities. So, our top five categories, the first pie chart there, we have student contacts. I guess I should note the fact that we, you look at a student contact, and I would just say, oh, that there's some kind of exchange. So, if I walk into the school and I say hi to a student, I don't count that as a student contact. When I walk in the school and five or six kids surround me, they start asking some questions, or lead into a conversation about who they are, who I am, what training is. Some sort of information exchange, we're getting to know each other, building rapport, teach, whatever. That's really kind of this contact. That's by far our number one activity. And Sergeant James Cloudy, he's in the crowd here, he's number one of the two. I think he makes up 60% of the three guys.
He doesn't let Albert and Albert be off.
Let's see, so, from student contacts, we go truancy checks, neighborhood exacts, foster service for new citizens and late birthday kids. Are going to class and not causing problems, or not getting themselves in trouble up there. Hall checks, reports taken, and then attempted lunches. If we remove contacts from the data, the next pie chart shows us our top seven activities. Truancy would be number one, hall checks number two, reports, lunches, all by fights and weapons incidents. Just saying, the fights, the police have taken, or very, before we got into this, I'd say it's a strange approach. It's not something the police are used to doing, which is a fight breaks out, and you watch it permanently. But we let the red shirts and the school staff deal with it, the school policy, the people that are informed, trained, and trauma, care, and reactions to handling. So, I've been here for a couple of the fights. It was different, it's a learning experience, but I think it's worth going in and responding to the fight. Doesn't mean we're even doing it, we're just gonna be there. The last fight I was shooting for was in the lunchroom. A fight broke out, the crowd started gathering, getting bigger. Albert was there with me. We get up into it, and we stand with the stick, the school staff. And what I did is I saw the school staff in a group struggle, and put my hand on them, and I just said, are you okay? And every time they said yes, I said okay. And I didn't have to do anything, he was able to handle it, he knew I was there if he got in trouble. And I walked away, I never touched him. So, generally, that's how the officers handle the fights here. Weapon incidents would be just a report of a weapon being used, a student, the discover a weapon. We're looking at mostly types, BB guns, kicks and... Here's a statistic that I like. For this school year, there's only been five reports of response to incidents. It's formally known as using force, an officer does something to control a situation, or does something in the wrong force. We've had five instances of CEO since the beginning of the school year. First one was a fight in a football game. The officers just separated some students from fighting, and they were getting into a crowd. We believe the students were actually from all week, but we're waiting to like, you know, something. That was an instance that had a no officer injury, no student injured. Move on, there was a report of a student walking outside of the school with a handgun. Sergeant Cloudy was there, we had the report, first on scene. We had a pretty good description, description of what the student, where the weapon was. We found them, matched it to the description, had them went back, matched it to something other than that. Sergeant Cloudy was able to detain that student with just stop ant techniques. No weapons, no firearms reported with the student. We did recover a limitation pistol, recovered some canvas. Student was manager, no officers were injured, and there was no arrest. The next one, there was a solid staff member, there was a student who was suffering from some medical issues that had gone on. Fighting, biting, took some keys, we used those as a weapon. The officers just simply pulled the keys away from the student, escorted him outside, denied access to the building, and then his mother couldn't pick him up, we had to transport him to hospital, he's still an officer. The next one was actually another fight in the lunchroom. This one didn't get out of hand, he stabbed me, he's in help. And two officers just simply escorted, gets away from the fight, and handed him a shirt over the head. No injuries to students, no officers arrested. And the last one was a fight that was actually reported to Rivera and Posenski by a janitor at the roof. They were filling their staff around, two females were fighting. The officer grabbed one of them, had a hair, it was a subpoena kicking in the face. The officer just prying her fingers off of her hair, separating the two, and they delivered that to a commissary to deal with. No injuries caused by the officers, one of these two officers, and again, no arrests. I think this addresses some of the concern that occurred when we were first involved, whether or not we're gonna be here, whether we're gonna come in here. You know, I've watched videos of officers around the country body slamming students, punching fourteen people in the face. But it's not something that's going to be discussed here at all. This slide shows us... So, this slide shows us activity by building. So, the way I'm tracking activity, we have all categories, we do it by every single location. And if it involves a student, it's often a campus location, you track it up there. This just gives us a picture of what most activity is. It ties into high school, that's where we're stationed. We are getting called, they're from the high school at a higher frequency than I originally expected. Sergeant Cloudy, we had two officers that had some unusual background. So, you can see the, start to see the need and where it is by contracting this. So, this next slide is gonna actually be for Jeff. I'll just make sure to do the same thing for you guys here. Yeah, I think this track, too, will help us devise activity in what we're doing, so it's not just responding to one place. If it's not needed, for instance, I got written down here, it is, if we have high weapons incidents in another senior state at a school, but the CEO activity is not allowed at school, it's not a location, we're gonna have to explain reasons. Why is it high that a location, and why are we just, we leave where it is, and we're just there. We know some of the things we're gonna be looking forward to, looking for, some of the other spots like shooter training. And we do have the law enforcement department that's working on that. It's not specifically tied to the CEO over there, but this year, the program for the closed doors, that's a one that's been fast. We've had, I think, record numbers everywhere. Thank you for coming, good luck, good job.
So, I think as we look back again, so just getting back to where we were when that pilot program began. I was just coming to the door, we had one school safety officer at the high school. Other than that, there was nothing consistent for our safety when we had the buildings. We had several culture community engagement specials, some elementary schools had one, high school had a couple. Some had none at all. And that was a role that we really didn't have a good description on, so it was kind of unknown. What the function was as far as safety went with that position. We had the two community engagement officers from SBD, and then we had about 85 paraprofessionals that were labeled as student supervision across the district. And because of staffing shortages, they were the hall monitors, lunch monitors, they were kind of catch-all paraprofessional when they were considering student supervision. So, those 85 people routinely would end up in classrooms or in places where there were shortages at the time. And so, we don't think they're all, we don't think dedicated to safety. So, one of my first goals coming in the door, when I took a look at everything, I took an inventory of where people were and what was going on, I kind of identified the main need as having to get people into the hallways. And it wasn't just getting people there, it wasn't about getting security guards there, it was about getting the right people there that could build relationships. Because I do come from the background that I came from, I do believe that every kid deserves a champion. I do believe that, you know, I do believe that we have to have an adult in every kid's lives, or every kid's life. And so, what we did was we kind of took the student supervision pairs and the CCS workers, and we kind of started giving them a few things. We gave them some TCIS training, we gave them uniforms, we made sure they weren't going into classrooms and covered classrooms all the time. We made them dedicate to just safety. We gave them PB on orientation, on trauma and form, and what it means. They came into us with a minimum of three years qualification, they were working with kids, or as safety and security in somewhat capacity. It was a different job, I mean, it existed here in the past. But it was one that, when we put it out there and started trying to grow this program, the people that responded to it were the people that had backgrounds in working with kids. And they worked at residential care centers, and they worked in what I would consider to be the toughest job that there were. The nonprofits in the world where kids were in placement, and they're really just, they were underpaid, they just were tough, tough jobs. But at those nonprofit places, they were receiving great training, TCIS training, I swore from day one, wow, police officers, every police officer should receive TCIS training. It's one of the things we brought to the CEOs when I first got here. It's a terrible crisis intervention, I apologize for the abbreviation. But that's basically a Cornell-based model for de-escalation. It's mostly hands-off techniques, it's all verbal judo, which we refer to. So, I think when we started giving more and more training, along with the people that came in and the training that they came in with, you know, they became informal counselors, they became, you know, informal educators, they became a lot of different things. And so, they really started materializing as the ideal position, because they weren't that adult where kids could build relationships for. And on top of it, a lot of them were coming right from Schenectady. I think out of the 75 positions right now, at least 60% of them, 70% of them have either roots in Schenectady or they live in Schenectady right now. I didn't have kids, you see some of the red shirts around me, the ones that hung in there for me tonight. But I think that as this continues on, the words, I actually started hearing in some of the interviews that I had with people that, I heard it wasn't a bad place to work. In the very beginning, it was, I don't know about coming here. So, there was a real shift in who was coming to the door, and just starting to get some really qualified people. And so, when we took our student supervision pairs, our CCS, and we gave them all these other things, they really brought us school safety officers and security monitors. And so, basically, I don't like the titles myself, because they do sound like a security guard. I would prefer that they have some other title, but it is a civil service position, and that's the civil service type of the state unit. So, you know, I think that when I look at it, when I see school safety officer, I'm really seeing a relationship builder. I'm really seeing that position that we were kind of looking for with culture community engagement specialists, but they didn't really find it in that position. So, when we took a look last year, if you look at the slide here on the left-hand side, that's what I proposed last year with Superintendent's blessing, was to try and come up with that many school safety officers, that many security monitors. We wanted to have some equities, it was across the district, it was consistent. That was on the left, again, what was proposed last year, the blue circles being the CCS positions. And so, what happened was, as we hired some of the blue positions that you see there, the principals still had a hard time understanding what that CCS role was, because it still wasn't directly safety. Did I do that? Can't also talk. Brian, listen up. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. [inaudible].
So, excuse me. So, I can remember last year after the first meeting, when we talked about this and presented, I can remember, or remember a little something that looks like a lot of safety people, and should remember the conversation. And I think that when we looked at it, it's actually fewer than the staff supervision or the student supervision pairs that existed. When you added up student supervision pairs and CCS, it was a number that was still lower than that. But this was gonna dedicate people to hallways, dedicate people to safety, dedicate people to families, no relationships. So, when we look at the right-hand side, that's kind of where we are now, it's not far off. We converted the blue positions to other red positions. So, those are your red shirts that you see there on the right-hand side. The circles that are open, those are vacant positions that we have right now, we're continuing to try and fill. And then, to go along with the bottom, we actually, hopefully tonight, you guys will approve, Ms. Sonya Holmes, who was up here in the crowd, she can stand up for her. Just hold, stand up for her. Miss Holmes. She's not a boring doctor tonight. So, hopefully, you become my first supervisor of the high school as a senior SSO. And so, with your approval, we'll be doing that tonight. I think that, again, what has come from these positions is that people are just fantastic, able to build relationships. And they've become the faces of their buildings in many cases. The red shirt that is in front of the building is a lot of parents recognize. I've had people tell me, I've had principals tell me, your parents tell me, you can't take away our Mr. Jones, you can't take away Ross, you can't take... And everybody knows who their red shirt is in the front door, Miss Savage, or... We'll see a few of them in a minute, I have a video here. But everybody has an identifier in front of the building in a uniform, and people are really taking to that. It's really, they've taken a liking to it, it makes people feel safer, and it's encouraging that relationship building. And really, they've become the liaison for me when there's a CEO issue, or there's something where it might be the police to deal with a family, or an issue that might happen, you know, or then communicate with the family over some issue that happened. We do want to, you know, we use them as, have our liaison. And so, you know, my biggest fear is that they're all learning so many skills. But, you know, I don't know how long I can keep them in these positions, because they are really great people, and they can create progress in our building. So, where we are now, as far as what else has happened besides that staffing, we updated and enhanced all of our access control, so anybody who has access... enhanced all of our access control, so anybody who has access, access control of the buildings, we tied up the system so that now, when an employee comes in, tenders can call the places that we can ever leave, because when people left, we didn't necessarily turn off their access cards, and it was just a broken system, we fixed the system. When it came to enhanced ID system for staff, we went to one secure card from a printed card or an access card, being a little system that just wasn't as secure as the other systems are. We brought, we brought out the request of the dev entry, the first ID system for our high school system, for our high school students, so all of our students have IDs in high school, we're actually pushing that down to the middle school coming up. Updated advanced camera systems, surveillance systems, all the stuff that comes with the, you know, what I came into about just over a year ago, we had about six hundred and fifty cameras, none of them really worked all that well, and it required hours and hours of a building administrator or IT person to review video, it just wasn't efficient. We've created an efficiency system where pretty much anything that happens in the buildings, we know it, we see it, and we have it immediately, right when it happens. We replaced and upgraded our two-way radio system, we're still in the process of doing that. We invested in new two-way technology, so we have digital radios in the high school, they have repeater in the high school, which basically means that it's crystal clear when they talk from one portal radio to another. Other issues that they had, one of the first things that fails in any emergency situations is the communication system. So it was important to upgrade that. We've put a safety line to all of our facilities issues, particularly the keying system, the secure vesting, all the things that allow our buildings to be accessed by people that shouldn't be able to access them, you know, we've addressed many of those things, and definitely thanks to Brian Nagy, our facilities chief, because he has stepped up and really done a great job with facilities, safety facilities, IT facility, or I'm sorry, IT and safety. Like I said, it's intertwined with so many different areas, everybody's been great to work with, and where it's come together really well in the buildings. We've created multiple secure vessels, we've kind of licensed all the visitors' entrance. SCLA has a visitor's entrance as they come in now. You know, we're putting these things together as quick as we can, and we're trying to get our buildings to look and feel the same as if I went to any suburban building. I don't want to go into any school building with cities connected, feel like I'm in a neighborhood town, out in a suburban school somewhere. So we're doing our best to make sure we have what everybody else has. We created the incident command center. What we do there is basically monitor the cameras, and that's where we no longer need an administrator or anybody, or a new camera, we don't need an IT person anymore. We have two people dedicated to just review incidents that happen, burn it up, put them on the disc, they support our hearings, they support anything else that happens in the district when it comes to the new camera system. Now, this data, I know everybody's super interested in, but I don't want to get into numbers at all on this, because Sony would probably be really mad if I did that. So I took just a snapshot, and, and all I wanted to show was the trend here. And I took four snapshots. One is your average daily attendance, which was trending up a little bit. We had our office discipline referrals, which was trending down. We had our out-of-school suspension rate trending down, and our in-school suspension rate trending up. And some might think trending up with suspension is not a great thing, but we're keeping the kids in school, dealing with kids in school. Some schools didn't even have in-school suspension last year, now they have. And so that number to trend up, I was fully expecting it to plateau, it kind of leveled off. The others, I actually saw the data this morning from this month, and it is continuing to trend. So I'm not going to get into those numbers, because I don't want to spoil other people's presentations. But safety is tied into everything we do, school sports services, like I said, the facilities, the IT, everything we do with the students, when we talk tier one, two, and three, safety always ties in all of a sudden. And so I think all these numbers are reflective of the changes that have been made, not directly because of safety, just as working together with other divisions. So where are we going? Things we want to look at? We want to continue cross-training our safety team members and continue their profession to develop. We want to get them to understand what apparently Azons do, what our tenant specialists, community specialists, all of the things you see listed there. And we want to continue to grow our own concept. Like I said, many of the people I hire are very, very qualified, they can do a lot of other jobs, they're going to keep educating themselves, they're going to keep moving forward, and we're going to CC Connecty, continue to grow, and hopefully they're going to keep training their replacements and their replacements, and this just becomes a nice system for us, where we can continue to have more and more people progressing. And so what's coming beyond that is our climate survey will be coming up in the spring from the teaching and learning office, they're going to be putting out our climate survey, and hopefully we can see those top three factors with parents and students and employees, hopefully those top three things aren't safety anymore. Hopefully they're no longer the number one concern that everybody has. And finally, I think Brian, play on this one.
You can hit play to candidates.
We don't know why.
Hi, this is Savage, I work at Martin Luther King School, and what I love about my position is making sure everyone is safe and happy. We have a pancake for breakfast. So before all of this, everyone was talking about safety, we're doing for our schools, now we're keeping their children safe. And now that they see us present, and they see that we're working hard, making sure that everybody's safe, they absolutely love it. And I did so many thank yous, Matthew did so many thank yous, and they know us from our red shirts, they're at MSA red shirt, they know that it's us, and we love that.
They feel the, the safety, like a safety band, almost when they come to school now. So the safety team is really doing a really good job here, doing what we need to do, making everybody safe and feel at home.
I started here as our safety team in September. One thing I love about the job is that the kids feel comfortable, they feel warm, they let me know they feel comfortable with me here. I love that I get to help the kids out, you know, when they're in their struggles, or even, you know, they like to come to me with their accomplishments. The cards make me feel amazing, you know, they're very unexpected, and I've gotten gifts, you know, I've had a student even make me a cake one time, I've gotten texts and calls saying that, you know, the students let their, their parents know that, you know, they love me, whether it's me playing games with the kids in the cafeteria, or, you know, helping their kids feel, you know, if they're feeling sad, making them feel better, or, you know, just anything. I've, I've gotten so many calls, I honestly can't remember them all.
So I think the anecdote is that, you know, when you put the faces to it, and when you see what eighty people looks like, or seventy-five people looks like, it's a different feel than having seventy-five security guards. And, you know, they're all really good people, they all have really good backgrounds, and so I couldn't be prouder of what we've created in the buildings with the red shirts. At first, I didn't know that I loved the name, but it just stuck, I didn't know what I was saying. So they became the red shirts, and now I have to call them. With that, I will be looking forward to, if anybody has any questions for me.
So I understand that we may still be in the data collection phase, but I guess what I want to know is, since the implementation of our red shirt program, our team, and the pilot of the community engagement officers, I understand that there are incidents involving students where our police officers are just present, but not necessarily getting directly involved. Do we know yet if those incidences are increasing or decreasing with the implementation, implementation of the safety team, or are we still just in the data collection phase, and we don't know the true impact of the team just yet?
I think that we're still in data collection for sure, but the incidents aside that we spoke of this year, you know, they're feeling far between. And I think that the police have been really, really, they've just put a real focus on not getting involved immediately unless they're asked for. So unless somebody calls for help and says, "We really need the police to deal with..." If it would have been a 911 call, they're in the building. And even when a building has an issue where they're going to call 911, they still call 911, and then we let that note make their way over there, because it might simply be a car that's supposed to look out faster. So I think, and I did want to say real quick before I move on, was, you know, one of the things that I always liked about the SRO program, and I was at SRO for eight years, but one of the things that I always told people about it, was that it gave the school the opportunity to educate the officers the way they want to treat people. And it gave them, within their setting, within, you know, within their control, it gave them the ability to kind of shape the officers. And I had never met, I used to train SRO, so I had, you know, forty-five solo categories that I trained. And I used to teach people that, you know, when you're in a school for a year, you're not the same police officer anymore. And I feel like, you know, it's one of those things where if they could all kind of make a rotation through, it would benefit everybody. But, you know, I think that that's my own personal take on it, with all my experiences and backup from, I think that working together with the safety team is ideal, they're not there to put out the fires, and actually, one of the first things that I thought when we were getting into it, you know, when I first got here, when there was a lot of debate about whether or not they want the school, I knew that they weren't the Azons. They weren't going to solve the problems that the school was having. They were not going to walk in the door and just start putting kids out of school or arresting
So this program creates a lot of stigma, because we come in and you see, you know, the students see somebody in the red shirt, you know what their job is, they know what they're doing. Another little piece of data I just wanted to add, so of those five incidents, those flights, in the same period of time, I believe there was twenty-three flights of the officers responding to. So I think that's probably responding to twenty-three incidents, and only in five incidents were we forced to pull somebody's hands off somebody or, or by the area.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. And you answered a bunch of questions that I didn't have to ask, right? So kudos. I do want to say that I agree with you that the title as safety officers was something that I was like, ugh. And my experience, I've got kids in elementary, middle, and high school. And in my, my personal experience and feedback that I've gotten, is that those red shirts are more culture and community engagement specialists than they are SRO, right?
I agree with that.
That they absolutely, those relationships at the building, they're not there, at least from my understanding, because, you know, we don't have a gap. But from my experience, they spend less time policing bodies, and more time talking to our children, right? And asking them questions, and referring them to other services, and have done a good job, right? With, with that said, you mentioned, you know, both of you said, there were programs that started at the same time, and not just these programs, but we also increased the number of counselors we had, right? And as it goes to data, how far are we going to assess each program independent of each other, to be able to know where we have greater successes, to have further investments in those programs and services? And some of that, we, we do have data from the pool, right? We have pre-pandemic data about what our schools look like. We were pre-pandemic, we were increasing graduation rates, we were decreasing suspensions, we were decreasing in-school suspensions and referrals, that was our trend prior to the pandemic, right? And we had very limited any safety officers for SRO, and we had no reason for that at all, right? So we do have a data point that we're able to reference about where we were trending in the programs and services we had. But being able to de-secrate the data that we have now, I think is going to be a challenge. And I wonder, is there any conversation about seeking outside help to be able to assess our, our programs, similar to, there was something else, we, we've had outside assessment for other things, right? To be able to look at things that we're doing and what that looks like, and the climate safety survey that's going to come out, you know, who developed it, how is it going to be launched, what does that facilitation look like, what that is going to be included? Because, again, red shirts, pants down, John Paul was doing amazing stuff. All red shirts go back until Lord of the Red Shoes, okay? And it really has a net, like, they are culture and community engagement specialists, they're leading kids and families at the door, talking to them in the hallways, the interaction that I see, right? I'm not in all the buildings all the time. So that has been amazing. We are still missing some security vest shoes.
We've only had three out of eighteen buildings.
Yeah, to such part, we might have.
Correct.
With that said, our red shirts don't play. I'm saying our red shirts, because that's, you know, a child. They, they wait to buzz people in, they ask who are you, do you have ID before they can go to the room.
It's because they're principal of the main event.
And when we used our, when we used our formula for how many we would have in a building, you know, last year's proposal was originally one per four in middle schools, that didn't seem great enough, once we had the CCSs, and we had, all of the non-mandated paras had either taken other roles or come to the safety team, it just felt like we were a little bit short. So we did dedicate one extra from our formula to such a part for just third door, because people recognize that they don't have a security vest.
Yeah, just real quick, guys, if you want to respond, maybe if your point is, is, is that, the really CCS, when we, when I got here, no one understood what that really was. And so we created this, and I also, one thing that I gave support to, we didn't, these people make more money than CCSs today. So we elevated that pay for chance where the civil service, that was a tight, but obviously we did that safety, so, you know, those folks, that's why we made a lot of those, hey, I'm going, this, three more hour, three more hour, remember, and so like, that's been a thing that's worked, and we elevated that, that group. And you're right, they do more, they, they really don't control, they, in a bag, they buzz, they walk kids in, and to their credit, they've done a lot of work to make sure that they... My, my fear is that one day they leave us, or some things they may go another job, we're hearing curtsied, trying to recruit some of our people back, and when those people leave, like their kids are going to be hard, in a sense, with the form of this, not here now, you know, or if the signs have been, and here at high school, there's reasons not, there's a reason why we want to elevate this, because she has now taken that, that is approved that are here. So us allowing career pathways to elevate those folks, and I would just say, if you probably can't do it right now, we will work on, I think, Lieutenant Delta was talking about, we, we're trying to add as many engaged as possible to show touchpoints, to show what the connections are, so if there are suggestions to the list that you provided, you know, please let us know, there's other things you want to see. But we treat these guys as really an absolute, I think, I want to go back to what I said last year. I, we don't want them to respond, okay? We'll be taking that on really hard. There are times when we get to the point where we say, okay, we may need some support here. And, you know, a problem, if you can just hand it up real quick? And, you know, a problem, if you just hand it up real quick. There is, um, a lot of compliments, because I interviewed everybody who is in our building. I, he did not give us that, that part of our party. And, you know, I told him, these are the two gentlemen who are in our school.
He got called out.
Yeah, but he's a, a student alumni. And so, there were things that were really important. So, the fact that the police department said, we won't place unless it's approved, to me is really important because we have three, we probably may not grow beyond three. Because I think we may have that need. So, although we talked about sales proposal, that may not come to fruition. And we're okay with it, and so is the chief, as my knowledge. But this gentleman here, he's everywhere. And so, I do want to make sure he's recognized for his efforts. Everyone knows him. He's at the basketball game, he's not sure if I was cheering last night. He was nephew, was connected to our kids. But our kids are starting to know who they are, recognizing, and he does have the honor where he has to go over it. He doesn't have a dad's. But this base was important. That our kids were approached by somebody, and I know that the situation in middle school definitely counters that. But the father is definitely connected to improvement. What he does, de-escalate families and to really work through them. There's a reason why we have a problem with this, because these guys are taking that approach really seriously to save families. Let's work through this, let's use the system, let's figure it out. So, I, I would tell you, if you can help us with other touch points and you want us to start collecting data, we're more than willing to do that. It's just so hard because it's so interdependent, the relationship, that sometimes you call them and you do like, oh, I know, I know it's mine. Let me go in the room and talk to them, let me go in and try to be there. And so, like, how do we categorize that? Because we are with you. Sometimes it's not that, sometimes it's after hours, like, I'm going to stop by his dad's house, just talk to him, I don't know, we will take care of this in the morning. And so, I'm not sure how we can capture that. We can go to an outside vendor and look for somebody who can help us, you know, trying to get the data, and things like that. But I do want to lift that there is some intangible measurements that are hard to quantify. Albert looks like many of our kids, I think he was a product, Jamie looks like majority of our kids, product. Even for this, Koberzinski looks like our kids as well, a product, a specialist. Those are the things that I don't know who can measure. I don't know who would get the same result with other officers. And so, I want to be honest with you, because I don't, I know that's important. And I don't know that we've been really intentional. If it wasn't working, they wouldn't be in, it's not going to be clear. If it wasn't working, G notes would say, you know, not working, one guy. So, the fact that Lieutenant Delta and Jeff, he, I think, monthly, training in the end now, trying to figure out less practices, really is groundbreaking in the sense that it's not really been done to this point. And I think for us being as transparent as we are, saying like, those are all the things, there are five situations that happen involved. As superintendent, you don't want that stuff out, right? Off the top of, people need to know that we're trying to get better, doing better. But I don't mean I need, I mean, you know, Allah has day work as well. There's things you think we should be better at, and such, if you guys know what you're at.
To your point about, you know, there, there are a lot of touches, but not a lot of police that involved it. If you're not, right? Those five incidences, which, how can I find a question? Our CEO isn't arrested in the bottom, but further arrests from, I mean, specifically from one of the cases, right? And as well, back at, like, if the CEO wasn't arrested in the bottom.
No, it's the question.
Okay. Right, as I'm aware, but also media helps, right? What I also want to hear is that our staff are new, right? That overwhelmingly, that in a year, there were five incidences where indeed you all had to interact with somebody that you were called to or witnessed. But that overwhelmingly, that there were twenty-three incidences that you haven't, you've known about them whatsoever? That our staff are new.
That was in September, October, I'm sorry.
So, just with this current...
So, just with three months. Also, there's been many hundreds of incidences where boards were provided, counseling was provided, and lots of other things. I just want to touch on something real quick, James has something he wants to say. But to get back to the point of the data, I just want to make it clear, Jeff initially had some conversations with superintendent and told me some things that were like giant. I looked at that list and I hardly tripped it here and brought it back to him. This is not something that they're tracking, this isn't just the police, or we're tracking it through our program. And we share that information, you know, as we get it, make it available all of you, anytime you want it. If you have anybody who would like to analyze it. This is the listing, what we have right now, it's up there. As I said, anything, any member of the board that's added, we would gladly add. And we'll take the input. So, um...
No, I just, you know, something you said, but outside of that, actually, student contact. I think as long as it goes, I just do like to say, for someone, you're exactly right. With red shirts doing a wonderful job. If you think I'm bad at the basketball games, right here is ten times worse. But no, I just want to go back to some things. First of all, if I were that, if you say the child, whatever. One thing that I can't recall is that, now me and that child were great before, every time I go out to stand, we talk, we had a big talk with them, and also when I talked with the mother. That was for half an hour with the young child. So, I gave them a lesson, that was one, it was a weekend work, right? So, I asked how people, we talked to each other, we would say, what's up? We would kiss, we would say, what's up? To twelve, that's what they call me. And he's like, oh, that's just JB, trying to find, you know, the type of time. And, you know, other things, like, all being the student contacts today. You know, Mr. Gray, I'm telling you that today we had circa today for juveniles, where the students would come in and talk about, about what it's happening. To say, how do you want it? Is that student contact, or they tell you that they may get a rebound tonight? Or the first session was great, the second was great, the second session, which you have like fifteen kids, you can answer this, Pante, and the other gentleman, Tyler. That was most powerful circa hours in the first month. We actually touched on policing a little bit, and we just got to break the lines. I actually told somebody, like, wow, this kid's tall, it's very powerful. So, for me, when you say walk, you can walk all day, but the issues that we build is no way, but you can say that, there's no way that you get it to know what actually happens. So, I just want to say that for five incidents, those who... Even the walk with the student, we didn't know if it was a student from the hallway or whatever, which is walk because of the fact that they get out to a, they're describing a game. We just happened to actually be like right there in turn, in the back room, describing someone in that situation. We also had to say, say, so yes, we have the red shirts still, but they really didn't even get to game, actually, we showed them. So, but you know, you're right, my approach is, the reason why I float is because of the fact how like we have a building, and everybody, it's happening, I know, and looking at the crowd, this man right here. Sometimes it's like, every day you go from there, it's happening, every day, I'm going to say hi. So, the big push really is not to handle everything, and let me see how it works, that's why I float. And we'll get through it. If you have any suggestions, let me know. If you have anything that you can all see, I always, but I just want to say that. Who are walking, I don't believe they do this justice.
Thanks, James. And I just want to add one thing real quick, that I heard him correct himself from juvenile to student, and that's what I'm talking about, is that education, that, you know, he came in here, juvenile, juvenile, doing now, and he can actually correct himself because he hears what he says. So, I think that's a win when it comes to the community. And I think that that's a win when it comes to them dealing with, you know, some of our students, whether, and so then, appreciate it.
One kind of question, if I can understand correctly from the presentation and the question to have the answer, it sounds to me that the pressure program and the community engagement officer program can work together. So, would it be safe to say that one program would be pass successfully operated independently without the other? And we have no way of all by now. So, it's really up to how the policing students or the security department or students, really depends on additional, the added support, the necessary support for our students in multiple areas, not just in providing personal security. If I understand you correctly.
Yeah, I think if you go back a couple of presentations to student support, they talked about tier one, two, and three. We focus so much on three. Most of this is like tier one, this is, let me make a connection with the kids. If every red shirt has ten really good connections with some more challenging students, then, I mean, that's eight hundred kids that have, no, that is a good connection for them. And I mean, that is really a lot of kids. And so, I think the CEO is on three, but, you know, it's the same result. It's, I can tell you, you know, when sergeant of the year wasn't going to be at school anymore, there was a line to say goodbye to him at the end of the day. You know, and I saw the same line when one of my red shirts got a job somewhere else and was leaving. He'd only been here three months, kids lined up to say goodbye to him at the high school, as well. So, you know, I know that, you know, when we lose people, it hurts, just like the superintendent said. I do fear some of them will get honed in their skills and take a better position somewhere, a better paying position somewhere. But I, I think that the overall success, I can't measure it, you know, separate from each other. I, I think it works together. I think, I think, just like it works with facilities, it works with IT, I think everything is intertwined. And I know that we're trying to move at a hundred miles an hour to make things better for our students. And I think that, you know, some of these things aren't really hard to measure on their own because maybe it is just that we have so many more guidance counselors and social workers that could be. But, you know, I always go back to Maslow, and I say, when somebody feels safe, that's when they can start learning. And hopefully, you know, this is just making people feel more safe.
And as well, except for something, I remember growing up as a child, and there's been a lot of challenges, that the hierarchy and how it's created. And we can't desegregate the data, but we also have a fiscal time, right? About how we can spend funding and to know that we are investing in something that is going to create a positive outcome for our students, as well as our staff. When we're talking climate, culture, and safety, it's not just, it's also our staff. So, what does the climate feel like so that all of our staff are safe, that all of our students are safe? And to be able to look at the data we do have, to look for opportunities, to collect evidence-based data as much as possible, it's something that challenges people across the nation, right? There's federal governments that actually have reports of policing in schools, what they can and cannot quantify and qualify. And whether or not, because this was the discussion we did in the pilot program, whether or not the response time changes within being in our buildings versus being outside of it. And it goes back to your point of looking at the data for where activity are being called to certain buildings. And this is something our police department already does, the progress, the turnaround of activity. And that if there is data that the police department has collected around hot topic activities, they already address that by putting control cards in those areas and have presence in those areas based on that data. So, should we be paying for half of the salary of those officers when the police department already has its ability to identify and target those areas and still be within response time to show up if necessary? Or is there someplace else that we can best out on, with additional red shirts with other account holders? And this is something we're going to have to decide because it's not just sixty million dollars, it's up to twenty-four million, right? To best be fiscally responsible to our students while showing their security.
Thank you. So, real quick, just to touch on something James said, and it kind of ties into what you're talking about here. Response time, really, if you talk about life-saving, it's huge. But as far as climate turns, and overall health of the city, response time is very difficult to do with that. It's really, to me, I think it's about relationships, and James touched a lot about that. I wear a different uniform again. I do school stuff, I do AICL stuff, I do road patrol stuff. Another thing that I can, coming into school, some of the kids that have developed a good relationship, they've started off, they're walking in, looking at me, and they're saying, fuck twelve. And I say, how you doing? Oh, you're going to talk to me? Next time I see a kid, oh, hey, this guy's a good one, let's talk to him. So, were that really transitive relationship, now I've built a relationship with someone. I've been in a situation where I go out on traffic stop. And I approach hard, and they're scaring the car, the one of the kids is a student, and they recognize me. Now, suddenly, they ask student, all of us, who, how we have a relationship with each other? It's just a whole different, it goes both ways. And I want to people on the street, I want the kids after they graduate from last year, I see them working, assuming, I see them, our police calls, I see them, we're helping out. And just having that rapport is not something that you can measure in here. I'll tell you, it makes them safer, it makes the police safer. It's just...
I hope that you advocate with the police chain that all officers have the same training that has allowed you all to do the things that you've done, and conduct those interactions the way that you do. And go forward, I think, and then we can give the decision. And I think that would be my question. But in terms of stuff, I would like to know a question. I, with that kind of witness, Mr. Jones here, if we compare to the volleyball game, we're in the volleyball game. And try to get this person that were coming up to all of them. Okay, you know, going in and talking to the students. It, I mean, it was in specifically the direction of Mr. John, I was seeing everyone, kicking, laughing. They, he sat in that LK, with all the parents, the parents who were still in the sort of garden. And they knew the students who, like, they, they were competing, they talked about it. And they, they actually, I got to the LK, they walked around, and she, I got her one, because she was very funny. But that's because I got a gig, rather, she was here, just saying, and there was a lovely young woman at the station. All the parents, exactly, went to the corner, all the parents were today, and you know, hey, hey, did she talk to you? She didn't, yes, yeah. I mean, there was so much interaction. We can not go on and on, I've got so many schools where I've seen how, how as well. It has led to such a, like, you're to see the interaction and the true relationship, and the talk about relationship, right? What is that looking like? And I see, and then talking, not only the talking, the action is going. I mean, there are true conversations, honest conversations about what was happening, and we're looking at the future. And the teachers said, so those types of things, I see now, and I think, I've also seen it with the CEO. Now, what's talking to me? You were, sorry, you were talking to everyone. Yeah, everyone was talking, I mean, I see the interaction, and they're powerful, and they're, but I do have some questions. Okay? So, on slide number twelve. It's the, um, the fire, the fire building, the fire building.
So, we're going to go to the UAC, because we...
I was wondering, and still I need to be sure, I know we're talking about the data, but I'm wondering, are people going to have these signs, the fact that somebody has, now, have to be more, you know, students? So, that will not have to be the data. But I'm wondering, are people going to have these calls for some of the, you know, stuff that's happening?
God, just will say, this is just pattern. It's all, it's all, it's all, so this is where I, I think, did make. We got to get better than, like, okay, how many of these were, there's so many on the, this report. How many of these were actually an interaction with a kid versus, you know, a girl or somebody out of school? So, they went over. These are just, anytime they call, that's it, these are, so, which means we have to... We're really, this is, we go off, and this is where we need our feedback, but, you know, this is just active, CEO was there, that's it. All right, if they have the seven, six, seven, or seven, or half, or half, it's okay, that's seventy-nine, seventy-nine, C H. It's just active, all of it, it's just active.
Yeah, that was the idea of the pie chart, it was to show that mainly, you know, the content, it's on it over there. And we can control that. I think that, um... I think that, um, we had asked that they collect about twelve points of data, which, you know, came from my own training, which was, was, you know, the number that I used. And, and they came back with, you know, it was twenty-plus points of data. And, and the goal was just to see, okay, what is going on, and what you're building. When you look at the one graph that, that's lays on its side, you see Hamilton has some disconnecting. That's because the Hamilton team had been taking advantage of calling, these guys were going to raid at the school, they've been raiding the kindergartners, they've had significant contact by invitation. So, um, so it's kind of hard to understand some of that. That's why the pie chart actually tells a little bit of a better picture, because...
If we would've did this better, this would be by school, so you actually see exactly what's going on. One category, three months. So, like you said, you have to, you have to, sometimes it's too raw, so it doesn't, it's not...
And slide eleven.
What does it look like?
It's the next one for, it's the one with the, the reports, it's one of the reports in this case.
Uh, pushing one of those people's line, you go ahead, I have, I know what you're...
Do you have any, I remember we made a conversation about what is being, our, our population. I'm just wondering, can I go and have a question? Why do you have a conversation with your, like, dad, like, why is the foster person...
So, uh, it, it's kind of, it can be a gray area, just because there's so many different scenarios that we can tell. And for this particular scenario, a student was fighting with staff, a student injured, remember, injured, fighting. Um, there's a necessity to stop that action, to protect the student, to protect the staff. So, you know, what they did is they just, sort of, correct them by the arm, walking out the door. The student wasn't, were they harmed themselves, threatening to kill themselves, they were in traffic, or anything like that. Their mother had already been notified, she was out of the way, expected her very soon. She, she showed up quickly, um, so I guess it would depend on the type of distress that happens, you know, if the student is threatening suicide, or, or changed up with, uh, alcohol. They involved that recently, so we might have to restrain somebody, to, to, you know, that was going into traffic, or herself, or doing that. Generally, we just take the least invasive approach possible.
And I will add, we had one situation that happened last year, where there wasn't, similar situation, a student that run off from school, he wasn't there on the scene. And because his mother was on the phone saying, tell the police to get away from him, it was gonna make it worse, and run to the park, and you find, they did, they did exactly what we told them to do. So I think that it's that teamwork that, you know, we kind of, if they viewed that the child was gonna really get hurt, then they would've taken action on it. Uh, but because we had a parent saying, no, he's fine, he knows the park, he's gonna run, he's gonna be fine. They let, and that might have a different outcome. If somebody called nine-one-one and said, hey, there's a kid running down the street, it looks, you know, like they're not feeling right, um, you know, that might have a different outcome. But the part of the police reform is the cha, is the training that they're undergoing for dealing with, um, mental health issues and things like that. I know there's extensive training going on, I know Chief, Chief Lister has been big on making sure that they receive the training.
And I think the other thing here is, like, Paul P. Jefferson, typically nine-one-one would've been involved. So we don't, you know, we've been fortunate to have these activities, we don't know that, go for the worst. And they're not available, and we make the call, that's it, Jefferson, Paul, in that, out of the tree. So they know if they're able to assist them, if not able to assist them, usually Jefferson's called. We have a seven-one-one, or ICC one, or whatever it is. So we know when anybody does go to nine-one-one, we're aware of that as well. Typically, Jefferson will piss up, or try to go, blah, hey, just call, it's a school, just say, okay, I'm on the way over there, or I'm sending an officer. So like, so the responsible, we, these guys aren't really wanting anything from you, but us, and just working on it. So if the law has got some, that's where the, then their challenge was, like, you said, how do we categorize? How do we categorize a call? Oftentimes, it doesn't require an outside unit to show up on the school, because we have the three of them. And they find themselves, they don't want to, they're comfortable coming over here. A lot of times, a lot of times, just to, to call, if I hear dispatch, dispatch a call, I can call this unit and say, hey, you know, it's called, uh, kind of, yes, it's, it was, it was, it happened to this situation. The student, taking, you know, so, hey, we're right now following students, students, this is going on. Okay, I can, I can say, okay, you know, we have patrol cars, the lights are on, bring more attention, bring more. Guys there, we have all the guys working, but let us in, let us, we have a report, let us in, so we can live. And ninety percent of the time, ninety percent of the time, it happens, like, if something happens, it requires, um, a, a, which you want, we let that be, but we try our best to just say, okay, that's all. And they tell, which is, you guys, your counselors, uh, your teachers, that you guys, guys take it, which is important. So, which is back off. There are signs, we, we give lessons, so I don't want to, you know, there are things that we can't, ignorance of lesson, you just can't stand, and they have a responsibility to, to categorize things, consider counseling, or whatever, determine, um, not really those things, but, uh, I just learned a new one today, twelve months, and... So, you know, what I would say is they have to get involved. We get, at night, air guns, you guys, they have to be involved in that extent. But again, there's been no less, other, but, you know, if you have a camp around school, or a student, uh, about the school, that's, helps them, uh, depression, it's not a student, once we get there, uh, small, actually the kid, um, they, I was gonna get the, I said, I was, uh, I would text, and, yeah, I think that's why, I could have pushed this, the watchers. And this child was trying, trying to, okay, now, I was there, so, uh, take it, you know, take a troll situation. The, uh, student's responding, the mother, okay, now, he's a officer, going back in the car, he came along a certain street, he's been, uh, now, she's gonna take my, my car, my patrol car, I got off in the traffic, I just, why she talks, when she's up there, getting in the space, getting out of the car, situation, and she gave me the thumbs up, I had to walk to my car, she didn't, I had, okay, bye. Right, I had to follow the school mall, call it, it's away, I was, everything's fine, my counselor's got it, okay, I'll see you, or if you need me, give me a call. And I had a report, and I seen this student, and I had, uh, some red shirts, they, they stayed, and also parents stayed. And nothing came over, the child was resting, the child was, was not, uh, the safety for the child. This is what I, you worry about, and that was, and that was another call that was called in. I, um, cancel, I didn't tell you, I had a call, I kind of, so that's a perfect, uh, oh, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I see. I was working with her as a family, and that's what I said, back, I said, well, this is September, that's what this is, family. Right? If we don't have to touch anybody or harm anybody, and that's, we don't want to, we're at a toll, that you guys have to, at the school, what you say?
Satisfied that they had the question answered. They might not be happy, but you know, there's definitely some people that aren't always happy, but you know, they get the answer they were looking for and they didn't have to go to the police station and fight with the police at the police station about why they won't do anything and you know, it's just, it's helped that situation.
So, I'm so, I mean, we've got a lot of people who are asking for positions because they're being just trusted, embarrassed, and they want us to support them, teach them, and so a lot of them, especially to help them, you know, with this. I have my friends who obviously have had a life of, you know, shared their positions. And I'm just very excited to hear this.
Here are a question, I'm so happy for you for that process. Um, I have a partial entry, um, because there are red shirts within our district that are certified and being able to restrain children as necessary. Um, so with the answer, our, our red shirts, someone that gave their baby a mental health perspective or a child that is physically out of control, ah, at a moment, and he's having extreme difficulties, if he runs out of the classroom, it is those red shirts that get him, make sure he's safe and hold him because they are trained in how to restrain the children so that it does not hurt. And then if a child is restrained by mother or staff, the process after that, if they are to be checked out by the nurse, the parent is more refined and it is fully reported, right? So, we do have a system in place for them to help when our children have that situation.
One thing, I was just wondering if they could share where these, like, all of these to begin and what they're trying to do, how they're trying to see, like, how to make contact with our staff or train them to.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing there that wasn't said was part of that, so we already knew what was happening here. So, you know, Adrian and her team, they already put those things in motion. We just need support to try to get this stuff, this, there was a physical cavity that just couldn't be at that point to try to get it on that space. Once that was done, since we asked for it, that's where the officer came in, I think it was you, or it was our, it was our, it was on there and we sent that. Strongly, I understand. Uh, but, but I also want you to know that there is a whole, there is a calling that the support services uses, there's a specifically the threat assessment, it also says some things like, you know, our, our, our social work and our supports that do a lot. And I would say anybody that's in TCIS training, which our CEO and our can have experience as well, so they know that is how to do it.
And what was important with that was the TCIS training that, um, Jolene spoke to and it gave them common language with the police. The police understand if they're involved in restraint, what the language is, they understand what the life space interview is, they understand all the different parts that come with it. And so, it's given them a common language when there's a response or crisis going on. And I think that, um, you know, Kate is a perfect example of a couple of fantastic red shirts. No building can be without this for or without it. It's just, it, it's fantastic, you know, and I think that, um, that training, uh, and then working together, and more than just when we needed them, um, that's really, it gives them confidence as well. The red shirts do feel confident because they know they have a partner. Um, if things get really bad, they know that they're gonna call me through the incident plan center, they're gonna have the, well, the CEO over there. And because of the work they've done with them, they've established that relationship where, uh, most of them call in on their own, they're not supposed to be on their cell phone, which they do, um, you know, because they, they do wanna be involved if something happens. So, um, I definitely, uh, I, I recognize that the hands-on techniques are definitely something, and, and I can speak to the fact that out of seventy-five people, right now, fifty-three are certified and the others were signed up to be certified in the next two months, which means that that, when we had eighty-five paraprofessionals in the hallways, it was sign up if you wanted to, only if you did, because of Kate with the attachment of, I might have to put my hands on somebody. And so, it was optional, and a lot of people opted out, so.
You want, like, so like, as, as we signed, so it's like they noticed part of the protocol, you know, the fire. I, I will also say, you know, our principals have been really important to this work, you really can, you know, necessarily, that's, I would say that in your situation, they appreciate being vulnerable and sharing that. Carrie is also a protector of what happens to the kids or what's exposed and how she uses those folks. Many of our principals know, like, they don't wanna call these guys unless they have to, you know, it's a pride of that, I don't wanna call them, and we, we don't want them to do that, but we view that as tier. Tier one, safety team and administration counselors. Tier two, you know, we may have that today, maybe have one holding place, may have to have children who've been in that situation. Tier three, the older ones, extremely bad, and it does require a fear, safety, life saving, or something that is pretty detrimental, um, I wanna talk to you, I wanna talk to you, I don't wanna talk to you, I don't wanna talk to you. And then, we, for us to have that ability, you know, it's been important, but I, I would say, I'm also, you know, I don't know, that's our principal, the gateways to sort of, um, they did do in the process, I mean, I think, you know, I'm not gonna put that aside, spot. When people walk in this high school, I think, going on, say, very good for, you know, it's just because those type of, those individuals with the safety team, red shirts, that build relationships with, they're, 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 you gotta build trust, you gotta be in groups. I think we're clear, you know, the places are clear for folks to work on, and that works, and it's easy to learn. So, the hope that, um, you know, we don't give, and that's the hope, we wanna, we wanna work to get them out of business, but the reality is, I think, because we're doing this together, there'll always be some sort of issue with this, with the fire.
And one last question, as it relates to safety, because you mentioned that tier one includes our counselors, will we get a report about where, where are we trying to, with our counselors, are we seeing an increase instance?
Andrew's coming up at the next presentation, he's on on the fifteenth.
Awesome.
Saving that question.
Increased instances of contacting students from social workers, counselors, from restoring practices, like, all of that.
She'll be hearing you, everything that's being done from our divisions and the data, that's why Jeff said, I don't think, even on the other side.
What'd they say?
Fifteenth, February fifteenth.
Let me make sure I'm.
February fifteenth, uh, support services will be, uh, the day after that.
Thank you so much.
I just wanna say thank you to the board members for giving this a shot, as far as the safety team went. Um, this was a big step, and I think that it's been successful, but it's working with everybody else that has made it really successful. I would wanna say something.
I was gonna pull that, I'll fuck him. Go, my sword. Um, no, guys, I'm sorry. Not a big, so, you know, presentation stuff, but, so, when, when I came into a school last year, there's one thing where we started learning, we put in the school, right, and it was a very hard position, because nobody knew me, very nobody, I had no relation with no kids, right? So, building that trust and building that relationship with that kid, with the kids, was very hard, right? And now, things like you were talking about, that Kate mentioned is that those students that do call to me, they're always, hey, Mr. Green, are you going to my basketball game? Yeah, I mean, like, he went to Michigan yesterday, I could have hit him, but, right, those type of things, that's the type of things that I took a shot for, right? I wasn't forced by my surprise, I wasn't, I, I took it because I really wanted a ride to come into the school, that was the story. Um, and the small things, right, the small relationships, I know that sometimes, you know, I work with government screen where, right, they'll tell you if you need something, right? Um, if there's a student that does have a mental health crisis, a couple of times, where I have contact with a crisis, I have, will come to our office, speak to a student, you know, I offer to help with those parents. Um, and like you said, a big major part is that sometimes you do have parents that come to the school, they say, hey, I wanna talk to you, please, I'm, right? I'm there, I'll, I'll, right? Um, you get, you get down, I see him in control over the summer, I work very well with control, right? I saw my man, a man, walking down, right, basketball student, right, walking down, right, it was hot, ninety degrees outside, I pulled over, spoke to him, I was in full uniform, right, on police car, they go, come on, let me drive, right? Those type of things, Kate mentioned, right? But that's really should work, right? If I see a student down, right, in my regular police uniform, right? He comes, hey, this is real, everything, right? Those type of things where, you know, I wanted to come over here, I guess I'm not a big father, but I wanted to express that, you know, by my heart, so, that's why I said that.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Judge, would you help me close this?
Sure.
Board members, we're about to begin. And we are going to begin. So, with the board goals today, we are not going to fully talk about the board goals, but I did wanna share two things with the board, um, actually about three things, with the board based on our past conversation, and then we'll continue at the next meeting and possibly the order session, okay? So, the first one, I just wanted to revisit, there was a conversation in the original, um, board goals about the word develop budget, I don't remember, so I shared the education law with Oliver. I called NISBA just to see what they, what, what their rationale was for develop the budget, because that verbiage actually, I took it from NISBA, okay? So, I shared with you the education law, um, and it mentions, and I won't talk fully about it now, but I just wanna share, I shared that with you, and then at the next work session, we'll talk more about it, okay? Now, you'll notice though briefly that education law, New York State education law, it says formulate the budget, the school board formulate the budget, how NISBA translated that is develop the budget, so I'll pause there. The other piece, there was another conversation about, um, board retreat, and, and that, my understanding from the conversations that we have to use board on retreat because it's an open meetings law type of issue, I called NISBA about that as well, we can call it whatever we want. So, we can call it professional development. Um, what they said is that a, um, professional development, let's say, I'm using this name, I'm making this up, but let's say it's governance, governance, board development workshop. It is not a body that we're in that we're voting or we're making decisions, so we can call it professional development, okay? So, that's the other one. And then I will pause, but I'm going to throw this out here, because in that, um, education law, um, document that I gave you, there's also information about budget hearing, because we talked about budget hearing in forum, so we'll revisit those three things, and then I'll pause right here, and then we'll continue at the next word, okay? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Grace.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And then next, I am. If you can give me a minute. Okay, so, the following policies are presented for first reading. Policy fifty-three, fifty-one, district issued credit cards. Policy seventy-one, twenty-one, diagnostic issued credit cards. Or diagnostic issued credit cards.
No.
Screening.
Student.
Where, where to go?
Oh, I'm looking.
Student policy.
Oh, okay.
Student policy and then diagnostic screening.
Okay, yeah, yeah, oh, okay, that's okay, that's okay.
No, this is first reading.
First reading. Any questions?
Yes, I have a, I have a conversation today, this is not so much about what's right here on the credit card policy, but, um, conversation today with a banker who was advocating for another situation, like, had, um, the use of debit cards and, and saying that they were actually safer with credit cards, they have more specified, um, uh, credit, or limits on them and take, you know, pins and all those types of things. Frankly, I mean, I know the credit card stuff, I'm just wondering about the exploration of, of the debit card as a safer, that bankers feel that's a safer mechanism, and I'm just asking that before we go ahead.
Yes.
I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but.
I think we have, I think we have like, six or seven cards owned, because I bought it at my, you know.
No, I understand, I'm just asking about.
And they all have credence, so they can only, they're all like, like a thousand dollars.
I know, they still felt that the debit card was safer.
I think the debit card is certainly, I mean.
I know, that's why I questioned it, but, but this is what I'm being told by them, so, and, and they live by them, so, you know, I'm, I'm asking.
I think for personal use, that's really, we don't want.
I, I, I hear you, I, you know, okay, just wanted to ask.
The reason why we shifted here was we didn't have really anything, a policy around it, so we created this policy. This is a new one that, um, Princess Mahalani and Vivian have reviewed this the first read, and so we, we, this is all right with us, um, so we're trying to establish it, and then we highlighted at the bottom just the, particularly what it uses around conferences or travels, just so that if you could look at the board already, the policy around that, and so we are just here. And then, the second one, we will see that there's language that was changed, we highlighted previously, the highlighted language, or, um, and you see the cross dot language, so that you know it's.
Thank you.
So, that was received from you guys last time. And here, the biggest change here that, uh, the board members advocated for was that parents are automatically able to resolve extreme versus having to request, you know, time, and so, that's really the biggest change.
Any other questions? So, we're going to transition to the consent items. And I just wanna remind everyone, the consent agenda items includes items that are approved by consent without a vote and were previously sent to the board for review. However, single items can be considered separately and taken off the consent agenda by a single member if they wish to do so. Resolutions eight through eleven, with the exception of resolutions ten A and ten D, as itemized on the consent agenda, are presented for approval. I'll accept a motion to approve these items. Motion?
From.
Thank you, Vivian, second.
Second.
Thank you, Noam Mahalani. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. So, items removed from consent agenda for individual consideration, resolution ten A, appointing certain employees tenure, I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
From.
Thank you, Jamaica and Viviya here. Any discussion?
Congratulations.
There's a few that's still here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Resolution ten D, ratifying an agreement between the Schenectady City School District and the Middle Managers Association, I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion? Thank you, Kathy, second.
Second.
Thank you, Vivian. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. The motion carries. Memorandum agreement with South Colony Central School District. Resolution ten, ratifying an agreement between the Schenectady City School District and South Colony Central School District, I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
From.
Thank you, Kathy, second. Thank you, Priscilla, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We have a second opportunity for comments from the public or board members.
And I wanted to comment, um, I forgot to mention earlier, but this is another communication that never, that happened, um, they're strongly encouraging all of us to participate, um, if they did not participate, unfortunately, they may not still have it, so, you know, encouraging the kids to, 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 to.
You're trying hard, and, and just real quick on that, that's those numbers that Terry showed, where our numbers have gone down, and so when they go down, I think it's a whole graph, or like serials, or, you know, so that, that's part of the challenge, we have high participation, and continue to justify hot breakfasts.
Um, is there any way to, or when we were in, kind of, in the morning, because we can't drive, they're there, to be like, hey, the reason why you're not having, having breakfast, like, did you go to breakfast, did you get breakfast, because they are out of class?
And some of them are eating, I don't know, but I'm amazed. So, I think we'll, we'll continue pushing, I know we're working on a, a couple campuses that are requested for breakfast. I just wanna, uh, give a shout out to, hung in the whole night, our new board principal is in the audience for Big Fisher Learning, Sarah. Fantastic, she works great background, and we think she's gonna do a lot of things for kids who want a different type of setting. Um, hoping that she'll, you can tour next year, Big Fisher Learning, uh, her kids, and she's gonna be opening, hopefully, a new book of sixty fresh.
Welcome. Okay, so, call for executive session. An executive session is now called for the purpose of discussing the medical, financial, career, employment history of a particular person or corporation. I'll accept a motion to go into executive session. Motion? Thank you, Kathy, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mahalani. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Have a good evening, everyone.